Yes.
Right. This meeting of Livingston City Commission called order roll call please.
Chair Schwartz.
President.
Vice Chair Newt.
Here.
Commissioner Cale.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Willich.
Here.
You've got corn.
Good. First order of business is general public comment. Public comment on any item that is not on the agenda this evening. This would include at this time consent items as well. Oh, you have four minutes to state your name and address.
All right. My name is Jackie Feigl and this is Jody. And we live at Seventeen Pony in the county. But we went out for our first trick or treating in Livingston this year. And we were on Yellowstone Street because that's what we've been told is that's the street to go to. And the state of the sidewalks is absolutely crazy. The sidewalks all around town are absolutely crazy and the amount of cracks and all sorts of just deep holes and cliffs basically through the sidewalks. I feel like should be addressed because that's a tripping hazard and an insurance claim right waiting to happen. The other thing I wanted to talk about was I was watching the candidate forum on the Zoom. And the actions of some of the people that work in the public that are commissioners or people who are public figures, I would say, was kind of not appropriate for who, I mean, we're all citizens of Park County. Some people are citizens of the city that live in the city limits. But I would just like for everybody to remind themselves that this L thing can see everybody in this room. And at all times, you should be thinking of what your position is and act accordingly, I guess. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Tara Eddy, Bucks 1454 Livingston, Montana. Comments on riparian zoning setbacks.
This will be in the zoning.
Oh, this is the zoning code update is coming on real soon. That's when we'll.
I need to wait. Okay.
Anything that's not on the jet.
Thank you.
And we'll get there pretty quick, too.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Jakey, first three twenty-five South Main. In review of the city claims in September, I noticed there was a one claim for $2,000 for a street planer. And I was just wondering, what does that $2,000 represent? Do we own it or are we making purchase, we making payments to our planner? Okay, okay. So, okay, on the $2,000 for the city street planner, do we own it or are we making payments? Well, there and where and now that it's past Halloween, where do we store these? Going back to claims, do you see different professional services products that were purchased on there? Is there any reason why people in the city, when they look at the claims, can't, there can't be a number or a code saying what department ordered that? So you can sort of look at the expenses from different departments and where they are what they have in their budget and where they are as far as spending. So we can sort of see just not just approved claims willy-nilly. The, okay, well, at the last meeting, the city manager informed members of Livingston, their resident Livingston, that the fee was $395 to close two streets in Livingston. And I don't know if that was just for during the week or if that was the weekend. And I want to know, is that fee that the city manager cited true for like residential areas of town? Like, let's say Crawford from like Eleventh to Thirteenth Street? Oh, there, okay. Oh, um, can you tell me the frequency of city audits that the city has performed? And I would like to know who selects the firm to conduct the audit? And what has the fee to conduct the audit? And has a forensic audit ever been conducted on the part of the state? And has, has the city manager or the city attorney ever advised Jewish commissioners that you should probably purchase additional liability insurance? I say this because there was a hundred, a city in Texas, 150,000 people. And a forensic audit was released for the city. And members of the commission were talking to the city manager and mayor of this Texas city. And they failed the forensic audit for $75,000. And both the mayor and the city manager told the other members of the commission council on there. You know, it's just time to move on. And I'm just wondering, do you think that the city of Livingston could pass a forensic audit? The, there was a news event. See, I don't see it. Okay. Well, I guess I'll hold out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, I'm getting.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Alita Shan. Write it in here of 428 South Yellowstone. Anyway, lovely winter's coming on. I can't wait. What a nice fun activities inside, right? So with that, anyway, I'm just here to say, I really want to say how much I appreciate your work and your efforts and your time. And with that, knowing that to put yourselves out there as public servants is something you do with your heart more than you do with your wallet, for sure, here in this town. And I really appreciate the job you are all doing. I appreciate the job you're doing, Grant. Everyone is doing here for us as public servants. Thank you. And I know that there's a lot of people behind me with that same feeling. But we're quieter, right? So I thought it was time for some of us to kind of come up and say, thank you. Thank you. And also, kind of with that in mind, someone had given me three words. I was a former teacher and I think this is applies to any community. Health, safety, and well-being. And when we go by those, that guide, or I couldn't have taught a class if I didn't have that in there first. And I don't think that we can have a functioning community. Any group cannot function properly without that frame in mind. And I hope I don't sound like the teacher here, but I am kind of used to this thing. But I think that covers the focus of what we need to keep in mind as a community and as, of course, public servants. And because we have to here take care of all of us. And if one person is being challenged or, you know, targeted, that's a weakness. That's a harm to all of us. That's a harm to all of us. So I just wanted to know that we're going to stand up and we're all going to be here together, united. And thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you. Any other general public comment in the room?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Becky Bird and I reside at 42 South Eighth Street. I completely agree with Alita's comments. And I think it's really preponderant upon the people that live in this town to all start taking the public stand against violence, against our public officials or anybody who resides in this community. It's a huge, it's a huge issue. That's not why I came up to the podium, though. I wanted to make some comments about last, the last meeting and the presentation by Kelly Miller with the Community Response Team. First of all, it is truly unfortunate that we had to wait so long to get to that presentation. Because not saying anything wrong with the previous parts of the meeting. I do think what's, what's happened now with the Community Response Team and the fact that we have a coordinator doing that is really, really important. And probably something that we need to take a lot of time and energy to make sure the people in this town know. We have a hard-won partnership with the county. It's County-City Venture to really address some of the very challenging issues we have with, which we all say we're very concerned about, whether it's safety, mental health, those kinds of things. Community Response Team is set up to start dealing with that. And the one thing, so that's going to make it better for the people that we are trying to help. I also think it's really important to note that it's also a benefit to our first responders and our public safety professionals who often haven't been or are not well-trained or comfortable dealing with people who are on the edge. So it's a win-win. I think it's a perfect example of how the city and the county can partner together for the benefit of everybody who lives in Park County, not just in the city, not just in the county, but together. And kudos, and I'm just going to say it. You couldn't have found, you could not have found a better person to take the lead on the computer, community or a critical response team. Kelly Miller, without question, is experienced, committed, passionate, and will serve the city and the county very, very well. So good job there and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Becky. Any other general public comment in the room? Otherwise, I'll move online. Any general public comment online? Please come off mute or raise your hand.
Yeah, I'm looking.
Okay, I don't need to look at you.
Nobody's coming.
Taking public comment online. All right, seeing none. Go back to the room one more time. Public comment in the room. All right, this time, public comment is closed. Next items, consent items?
Do you want any questions?
Oh, yeah. I always forget that. I don't know why. Yeah, I didn't take any notes.
Do you want me to prompt you, Mr. Gauger?
No, I am, I am, I've got my notes. I just am confirming the audit contract value annually, Inspector. I apologize. So on the, let's see, the first commenter.
Sidewalks.
The upper way, the sidewalks. Didn't hear a question there. But, you know, I guess as a reminder, and I understand that, you know, it sounded like the commenter is not a city resident, so they might not be familiar. But in the city of Livingston, actually sidewalks are the responsibility of the homeowner and have been for many years. And so certainly I live on the street that was referenced, had a great time, really enjoyed handing out several hundred, if not a thousand pieces of candy on Friday night. It was a blast. Loved it. Good to see the community out. Yeah, we do get a lot of people on Yellowstone and certainly there's a lot of sidewalks in the city that could use a little bit of love. But again, that is a homeowner's responsibility there. But thank you for coming downtown. We appreciate it.
And with that in mind, I guess, if you have a really bad spot, let's make a specific complaint, I suppose, to the city and they would trust the homeowner with it, right?
Yep.
Would be the proper remedy.
And you may recall as part of this year's budget, one of the recommendations was to provide some matching funds for homeowners. I believe we expect to launch that problem project in the spring initiative in the spring and when we get back in the construction season. The, let's see, the next commenter inquired about a claim for $2,000 for a planter. I can assure the commenter that was not for one planter, that was for multiple planters. And let's see, I was last out at the Public Works facility, gosh, I think on Friday, if I'm not mistaken, maybe it's Thursday afternoon. And the planters, several of the planters are right outside the door of Public Works. Had some flowers and other greenery out there to welcome my guests. And I believe we'll be moved into the cold storage building out in Public Works for the winter time to be stored and possibly redeployed elsewhere in the city next growing season. As far as the audit fees and timing, I will jump to that before I come back to street closure. And according to the city finance director, the audit contract is approximately $34,000 per year. The city is audited every fiscal year. And actually, the auditors were just in the building two weeks ago. And we've got just some final follow-up stuff with them. And the audit report will be presented to the commission here in the next coming, probably two meetings, I would guess. Possibly could be ready for next meeting, but very likely early December meeting. And as you know, consistent with Montana Code annotated, the city is audited every year. And the, we did have an audit finding this past year. Was actually because the, the street impact fee fund had a balance that was slightly too high. Because the city, as we all discussed at the time, had been saving funds for the Great Separated Rail Project. And so a fund balance has accumulated in that specific fund. That is the only finding that I'm aware of that has been made in my time at the city. And it's, you know, it's my understanding that's the only finding that's been made in quite some time. And as far as a forensic audit is concerned, I would offer to the commission that forensic audits are typically conducted at a point where some sort of malfeasance, wrongdoing, or other further investigation is sought from financial statements. A, as you see, the claims every month, we process literally hundreds of invoices every month to do a forensic audit on just a full year, one year would be a very large endeavor. And so would be very costly to taxpayers. So, you know, certainly if there was a concern of the commission, a specific concern or of the public, you know, that was, you know, the commission felt warranted investigation, would be happy to engage in a forensic audit, but typically not an exercise that is performed just, you know, for the heck of it, so to speak.
And I will add to that, that the, I don't know if the auditor reached out to you guys, if you had any specific concerns.
I think she reaches out to the.
So, yeah, so did reach out if I had any concerns and stuff, so.
And then finally.
Can I add to that?
Yeah, please.
And like in past years, when the public has brought concerns about certain projects, I have flagged that for the auditor and say, can you look at this particular item? Let's say the Wellness Center is an example because that got a lot of public comment. So that was one that I have flagged in the past and say, can you look at the Wellness Center and make sure you do like a double take on that one because the commission's going to want to know. And that, so I mean, that is something.
Somebody else.
Yeah. So that is stuff that we've done, but it's always, it's always come back. With the exception of what you mentioned with the Streets Department, I don't ever remember any other findings in the audit, other than everything was in order.
Right.
So.
Especially now with the way the budget's going and stuff, too.
No.
And then I guess to address kind of the final area of questioning there with relation to road closures, street shutdowns. And this is from the fee schedule that you folks adopted, oh, it's about a year ago, actually. And you'll note on this for special events, which is where I felt like I heard the specific question related to events. A street shutdown Monday through Friday during normal business hours is $500 per street up to two blocks. So that is to say, if a person was interested in closing, let's call it Main Street from Calendar to Clark, that would be $500 for up to two of those blocks. If they wanted to extend that closure down to Geyser, they would add that additional $100 that you see for an additional street there. And after 4:00 PM and on weekends, that street shutdown jumps up to 750 for that. Again, initial two blocks and then 200 for each additional. And I would note that a change that was made, I believe maybe two years ago, was that the, all of the traffic control devices included in the shutdown or required for the shutdown are included in that price. Whereas we used to bill people out individually for cones here and there. That's something we no longer do. So hopefully that clears up any questions. And so, yeah, that the streets, those are the same for any street, the streets, a street shutdown for us. Whether it's, you know, whatever calendar between 10th and 12th or maybe between, you know, Clark and whatever. So hopefully that answers those questions. And I did not hear questions from the final two commenters, but I certainly do appreciate the sentiment.
Can I add to your?
Okay.
I would say the city manager doesn't decide the fee schedule. That's the commission. We've set the fee schedule. We do ask for recommendations from staff, but we also have changed those before we vote on them. And then in terms of like, can you tell which department things are spent from? The answer is yes. You might just need to email the city manager, though, and he'll direct it to the correct staff. Because all of these, like if you look at the, when you look at the claims, everything has an invoice number. And so the people that work inside the city, they can look everything up by the invoice number and tell exactly where things, like which department it's coming from and narrow that down. I think it's, it's probably too much to put just on this format. And some of this format actually has to do with the way the state, like the, the reason our claims and things look a certain way. It's my understanding is because some of it's required by the state, right? And how like all cities have to do things in a certain way so the state can monitor all municipal government? So some of that we're sort of bound by what the state requires is, am I missing anything on that? I think I.
No, that's correct. We do use a common chart of accounts across municipalities here in the state. So we don't have that freedom. But, you know, certainly, you know, whenever commissioners have, you know, questions and we are very quickly able to retrieve the invoice, happy to do that for any members of the community. But, you know, the, the point certainly is, is well-taken and I appreciate it being made that perhaps we could, you know, we do, well, we do monthly financial statements internally, but perhaps it would be worth including the transmittal of, of a periodic, you know, six or quarter, six-month or quarterly statement to the commission transmitted on the consent agenda might be a beneficial exercise, not only for you folks, but for the community. So something the director and I will discuss.
But I think the planters actually were part of URA funding, perhaps? So not actually.
Yeah, that invoice was actually paid by the URA, but their, their checks.
Right. But just, like, just for the record, that that particular charge, I think, wasn't even paid by the city of Livingston. It's just, all right. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Gager.
Yeah.
Anything else that?
No, I didn't say anything.
Okay. All right, moving on to consent items. Any consent items need to be pulled? If not, entertain a motion.
I move to approve consent items A and B.
One second. Yeah.
Motion by Willich and a second by Newt's, all in favor?
I am.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Pardon me. Next order of business is a proclamation. This is a proclamation of City, proclamation of Livingston City Commission recognizing November 11th, 2025 as Veterans Day in Livingston, Montana. Whereas on Veterans Day, we honor the brave men and women who have served in the United States Armed Forces, defending the values of freedom, democracy, justice, and justice upon which our nation was founded. And whereas the courage and dedication of America's veterans have preserved peace and protected our nation through times of war and conflict, ensuring that generations of Americans can live in freedom and safety. Whereas Veterans Day serves as a reminder of the sacrifices made by those who answer the call served, many of whom left behind family, friends, and the comfort of home to safeguard the principles we hold dear. And whereas the city of Livingston expresses its deep gratitude to all veterans, past and present, their service, sacrifice, and unwavering commitment to our country. And whereas we also recognize the families of our veterans who support resilience, have strengthened those who serve. And we recommit ourselves to honoring our nation's heroes through ongoing care, respect, and remembrance. Now therefore be it resolved on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I point in Schwartz chair do hereby encourage all residents to join in honoring the service of our veterans as we recognize November 11th, 2025 to be Veterans Day in Livingston, Montana. And further, on behalf of Livingston City Commission, I thank our veterans for their service. Mr. Yeager?
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. The city of Livingston has a large number of veterans on staff. And so I thank them for their service overseas and again, their service at home.
Sure, is anything else, Dan?
I have a lot of friends that are veteran and I am deeply appreciative to their service. Continued and passed.
Thank you, Christian Roach. I as well, family and friends.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Past and present.
Yeah, I have presence and, and the services. Yeah, same. And like lots of us also have people that didn't make it home. So it is an important day and we all celebrate it in our own way, even if it's privately because it's personal for some of us, so.
All right, thank you. Okay, there is no scheduled public comment. We have one action item on this evening. This is ordinance 3064, ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending the text of the city's official zoning ordinance by repealing the entirety of the text of chapter 30 of the Livingston Municipal Code and replacing it with new zoning code text. And before we go further, do any commissioners have any disclosures or conflicts regarding this action item?
I.
Don't all speak at once.
I can start. I do need to disclose that I am a staff member of Park County Environmental Council. It appears they made comments to the Consolidated Land Use Board. I don't participate in any of the work that PCC does in the city. And it is my understanding from conversations of the city manager and the attorney that though, none of those comments were incorporated into the current proposal that is before us. And that I am free to participate in this conversation vote. But I would ask Mr. Gauger or Mr. Hess if I missed anything in there that they want to add to.
No, we have reviewed this with the city attorney and. No, we uh have reviewed this with the city attorney and um there. The items that were commented on by the employer um were actually largely omitted. From uh the the document that is here before you and uh and or were just simply not incorporated. Um there is there, the only thing that could possibly be considered to have been incorporated was that. There was a clarification on zero escaping and native species, um but it's our understanding that that, you know, was. It didn't change the intent of of the ordinance, so um I, you know, I I I don't believe there's a a conflict and I'll allow the. City Attorney to opine if he does.
No, that's if that's generally um. In my opinion, about this shouldn't take place. Uh if that agency, though, appears tonight and makes comments on this ordinance, then uh. Fisher Kell could not participate in the vote. So, given the fact that none of those uh recommendations were adopted by the planning, uh the Consolidated Plan Use Board. And and they did not make any recommendations that any of those comments from that agency would be included in this draft of the ordinance. Uh so I do not believe that she is a conflict of interest. But if they do appear here tonight and make comment on this ordinance, then she could not vote.
Thank you, Mister Hess. Thank you for your candor. Commissioner Lyons.
I have first.
Did you have?
Uh I guess we do.
My wife has made some comments at the land use board and I see some in the packet here. Um but I don't think that that's a. I don't know. My my wife's made some comments.
Uh thank you, Commissioner. We are aware of those comments and the city attorney and I have discussed them and I'll allow him to share his perspective on it.
Yeah, I do not believe um uh number one, you're not employed by that age, that agency that your wife is employed at. There is not an economic issue involved here, such as review of contracts. Uh so there's no um issue like that involve. Uh uh I don't, uh so I don't believe there's a conflict of interest because the conflict of interest statutes. Um and the city's conflict of interest policy. Uh do not create a nexus that applies to your family members. Or any other relative or extended family that comes in and makes a comment. Uh on some issue before the commission. So I I believe that you do not have a conflict of interest. Uh that may, that's entirely different, though, if there's money involved. And contracts and things like that, so I do not believe that. Commissioner Lyons, that you have a conflict of interest if your wife, even if she were to appear tonight, or if she submitted. Written comments on behalf of her employer on this ordinance.
Thanks, Greg. Thank you.
Thank you for your candor. Mister Willach, how's it?
Yeah, uh well, I don't know if they're complex necessarily. I perceive them to be complex. Uh my spouse is a manager of. Uh a couple of short term rentals and commercial properties of the city. And are gonna change the zone here. I I don't believe that's a a conflict of interest.
No, everyone in this room is a landowner within the city. And these either gonna be directly or indirectly uh affected by this ordinance, so. Uh I, that's not a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Commissioner Willach. Commissioner Newt's. I have none. You're right. Now, Mister Gauger. Have you ever approached us? It's a big one.
Yeah. Like like all good things, one bite at a time.
Yeah.
Um so I, thank you, Commissioners. Um the item before the commission this evening is the first reading of ordinance three zero six four. Which is a text amendment to the City of Livingston uh Municipal Code zoning provisions that should appear in chapter thirty. And uh before I turn it over to Director Severson, uh I would just point out that this is a. Um this item is before you, as was discussed in in the last meeting, um as a result of the growth policy. And the feedback that uh the city received from the growth policy um process. Um and culminating with the the adoption in twenty twenty one. And so uh over the the past year, the city has uh worked with a team from the S C J Alliance. And held a a number of uh public open houses, online surveys. Uh and other uh interactive touch points with the community. Um including three meetings of the Consolidated Land Use Board uh earlier this fall and an additional open house as well. And so uh we have received uh over fifteen hundred comments throughout this process. Uh and the process uh has been helped by um several focus groups made up of community members. Um with various different uh specialties and so. Um before I do turn it over to Director Severson, I would like to thank those members of the community. Uh and some of them are here in the room still this evening um for their time uh helping to review uh drafts over the last year. And and help ensure that uh the project was responsive to the community input. Uh and also to some of the realities uh on the ground um in the faced by the the development community, uh the conservation community. Um and and frankly, our residents as well, and so uh. Director Severson, I will, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Director. Thank you for all, by the way, thanks for all the work you put into this, it's been a lot.
Good job.
Yeah. What you done, you're doing good.
Thanks, there were, there were a lot of people that put a lot of work into this. Uh I just kinda bring the little herd of the cats and. This is what you get. Um, all right, so. Do you wanna?
Good sharing.
Okay, I didn't know if you wanted to change the view.
We have a microphone.
I'll I'll speak up too.
We were having some issues this afternoon with it, but I'll see if I can't get what they were here really quick.
I can also stand over at the side and project.
Do you have a laser pointer you can use?
I don't. I can just.
They were really not happy this afternoon, I'll just say that.
Just one.
Evening. Okay, so this is um for the zoning text amendment. Um it's a citywide comprehensive um zoning code update. Uh we are bringing you both the. It's comprehensive update. It looks at the zoning, the text of zoning code in chapter thirty of the Livingston Municipal Code as well as the map. Um however, uh due to recent uh state law pass. Um passage of the map amendments of a zoning code now have to be under resolution, whereas the text. Has to be done by ordinance. Uh and the resolution is effective immediately, so. I'm, we're bringing both to you so that you can, because the map amendments kind of inform how you look at the text. But I'm not asking you to take any action on the map amendments tonight. Um we will bring those back as a resolution, a separate resolution later. Uh so, yeah, this is as Grant said, um. This is not only, I would say, in um response to uh recommendations in the growth policy. But a lot of this to align with with the growth policy update, growth policy was updated, or sorry, the growth policy was adopted in twenty twenty one. And uh we have not had a comprehensive update to our code since then to align our code with the growth policy. Um growth policy is a visioning document. Uh however, the zoning code is provides the city with the regulatory means to um. Implement the growth policy. Um so it is regulatory, whereas the growth policy is not. Um plays a role in shaping how uh we grow and evolve um. We, I actually checked this today. This is not in your staff report. This is a brand new statistic, but um. Livingston adopted its first zoning code in nineteen fifty eight. There was one comprehensive update to the code and included both the text and map amendments, looked at everything in nineteen eighty one. Uh this is the first comprehensive update since then, so we have piecemeal uh made map amendments, code amendments. Uh updates according to to reflect what has happened at the state legislature for that two year period. Um but this is only being brought to you to say this is a pretty big endeavor, um which is why we've been doing it for the past year. Um so this is not just to align our code with the growth policy to help us implement it, to be able to regulate that. Um but also reflects the latest um twenty twenty five state legislature changes um. Related to municipal zoning. Um and then, yeah, I've already explained about the map amendments coming separately, so that's kind of the purpose. Uh public engagement, city manager gauges already touched on this. Um we have been working with a consultant S C J Alliance over the past year. Um the four focus groups that uh city manager mentioned um looked at development. Um members of the community that were involved in uh development. Uh types of businesses. One was housing, transportation, and human services. One was related to business owners in the community. And the last one was preservation and conservation. Uh we had anywhere from four to seven people on each focus group. Um we identified, and this is, focus groups are kind of similar to what you'd see from a steering committee for this type of project. Um and those are typically um. People in the community are identified through the city government or other groups. Um versus like an open call to participate. I believe we sent invitations or requests to participate in these groups to. Sixty plus people, you see that. Um and so those that responded that they wanted to participate, this is what. We had, but those focus groups were instrumental and they met a few times virtually, in person with S C J. Um and then provided feedback and guidance throughout the process of updating the code. Uh we did have two community open houses, one when we launched this last November and then another, as Craig mentioned, um. In between, uh I think it was the first and second uh land use board meeting. Um we realized that there were a lot of people that had not heard of this process, uh were not aware. Um and were just learning about it, and so we wanted to give them the opportunity to ask. Um there were three staff members, uh city manager Gauger, uh Greg Anthony, who's our policy advisor, and myself. Were all present at the open house, available to answer questions one on one, um to try to um. Basically provide more information to the public. Um so uh the preliminary findings were presented by S C J um. To you at the city commission this past June. Um they were initially, the preliminary findings from the first survey, it was an online survey, it was very brief. Um those were presented to the land use board in November of last year. Um we received just from the online surveys, this actually does not include, because I didn't have time to count. Um the comments that are in your packet today that were provided on the drafts that you are considering. Um but these are just for the online surveys, uh fifteen hundred comments, more than fifteen hundred comments. And those were from more than two hundred twenty seven individual people. Um. I went to the high school and presented a little bit of information to one of the classes there, um and did that twice just to answer some questions, make sure they were aware of the process. For the the project and kind of. To try and impart how important this project, this uh is. Um and then finally, um we have had the draft map and text amendments posted online. Um and provided uh uh names for their people to submit comments. Um they can either email me or they can submit them. Uh some have been emailed, I think, to you, to city manager Gauger. Uh a lot of them have been received through the online portal that uh you can just click while you're reviewing it. Um and those have been available for public comment, and we have been accepting public comments on these drafts since September first, so a little over two months. Which is a a long time. Uh this is just uh showing you the growth policy future land use map. Um there are quite a few, um as you are probably aware, but just so everybody is aware of this. The future land use map and the growth policy in twenty twenty one um identified. Uh future land uses, desired land uses um for the land that was in the city at the time, so there are some. Properties that were annexed since then, like Vista, uh R Y Timber, those areas are not included in this. Um so that will be uh anything that's in the city at the time that we impart on the growth policy update, which will be in the next year. Uh we'll do our five year update, uh those will be included in that next future land use map. Changes to the code that's being brought to you, the the text amendments. Um on the left, I'm not gonna go through all of them, but there were four main um legislative bills this year. Uh that were signed into law that um impacted changes that we needed to make. Uh in this code. Um and those are, I've identified those in yellow here. One I didn't include, I just realized, was um basically ru- um adjusting. Uh the historic preservation commission's responsibilities and and I don't wanna say powers, but. Uh under their purview, uh they are no longer under state law allowed to um. Provide um decisions and and um based on zoning or. Uh in the case here, we utilized uh their expertise for. Um sorry, exterior modifications to structures in the downtown Asser district. Uh they no longer can do that. I wish that they could. Um now I am responsible for doing that. Um but that is one thing that's not identified here. It is reflected in the code changes that you have. Um building heights were a big one. I would say building heights and parking to me were the two biggest ones by the state. That um we really had to make some changes and I'm I'm bringing this to your attention because. Um. We made the updates and then we adjusted what we had already started hearing from the process before the legislative session. We had to make some adjustments um to be able to comply with state law. Um so while some of these things may not be ideally what's in our or are not what's in the the growth policy. We don't have a choice. Um so uh. I won't go through these all, I'm happy to answer questions, but I will say two things and I'll go into. Uh this a little further in another slide, but um we did receive. A lot of comment on riparian setback requirements. Um quite a few people, I think there were over fifty five signatures that are in your packet for a petition saying that. Uh those folks don't wanna see any riparian setback requirements. Uh several of the environmental organizations um in the area. Uh said that they would like to see larger ones than we had originally included. Um and so after a lot of discussion um with the city manager. And looking at how um other jurisdictions have done this. Um we are recommending that we remove the riparian setback requirements completely from chapter thirty. Um until we are able to do a focused. Uh environmental study along the stream reaches that are unique to Livingston, because Blushman Creek has a lot of things going on that it's. A lot of natural streams do not have. Um and vice versa, and so to to try to set that number without um. The information that a study would inform, um I believe is is just not the best way to go, so. At this point, the text in front of you, we have removed the riparian setback requirements completely from chapter thirty to be addressed in the future. Um building heights.
Can I just ask like a really quick clarifying question? I think I know what you mean by stream rich reaches unique to Livingston and setbacks, because I've been sitting here for a while and understand this language. Could you put it in like non planner speak? Not to say that you're speaking.
All coming from Love Recovery Boulder.
I just wanna, I just like wanna make sure that people understand, since they're passionate about this, like what you mean when you say unique, like stream reaches and like. What we mean when we say setbacks. What we mean when we say setbacks.
Yes, so the setbacks is a width. I guess like so similar to building setbacks in the zoning code. A setback on a riparian area would be. The assumption without a study saying that anything next to and and in our case, we were looking at natural channels. We were not looking at drainage ditches because. I can explain that, but we were not. So along natural channels in Livingston's case, that would be the Yellowstone River, Billman Creek and Fleishman Creek. You would have a setback from the edge where I think it's we have at the ordinary high watermark. Of that waterway in which you could not do any development. Disturbance, different places do. About a small area where you you have no disturbance to vegetation, native vegetation stays there. And then a little further back, they may have a building setback, so you can't build anything. Like a structure within that setback area. Origin and for stream reaches, what I mean by that is.
And setback is just like the distance.
The distance from the.
The high watermark.
At the edges.
At the edges to like whatever that says. If it's like ten feet or a hundred feet, it's like this is like a no-go zone.
It's a no-go zone either depending on how it's written, it can either say vegetation cannot be removed or you cannot build a structure. I think the way we originally were bringing it and had included it in earlier drafts of this was just no development. And realized going through this that it probably needs to be a little more detailed and fine-tuned. What I mean by stream reaches is if you think about Fleishman Creek. Closer to where it empties into the Yellowstone versus up by Town and Country. It's a very different stream. And so streams are often, they're they're separated into different reaches that have the same types of characteristics. So that could be the the tree, the tree canopy overhead, it could be. Causinuosity, how how meandering or curvy the creeks are, because that can affect how the water moves. But there's different reaches that on on us on the same waterway that may. Need to have different setback requirements.
And reaches like how much it like grows throughout the season?
Reaches the length, I'm sorry, the length along the water body. So yeah, so you may have within within our town, I would say. You you may have five, six different reaches along Fleishman Creek as it goes through the city of Livingston. They they just each reach, each stream reach has different characteristics and I'm just way more scientific than I can really thoroughly explain.
Thank you.
The other thing, parking. We, the state has determined that. We don't need as much parking as maybe we think we do. So they have required or they are requiring that updated parking requirements. We, is it in here? I know it's in here. Basically, it's it's mostly. For commercial properties and and uses. It basically just says you can't increase when a use changes, you can't increase the number of parking spaces needed. That also includes a vacant property that maybe has been out of use for a while. If you have a new use come in, we cannot impose anything beyond the parking they already have. How that works, if a building is larger than it was, couldn't tell you, we haven't addressed this yet because it hasn't come before us. I think possibly the bigger concern to me would be the residential parking requirements have decreased. The last legislative session, the state removed our ability to require off-street parking for sure for. An accessory dwelling unit. Now, in addition to that. Or residences, single-family residences, right now our code currently requires one off-street parking space. Or sorry, yeah, one off-street parking space onsite of the of the residence. I'm sorry, our code currently requires two off-street parkings for a single-family residence. Excluding ADUs. Now we will only be allowed to acquire one. If a residence and it doesn't, this part of it doesn't look at whether it's single-family standalone or it's a duplex or it's multifamily. For any units that are less than twelve hundred square feet in size. We can only require a maximum of a half parking space per unit. So what that means is it will be rounded up. If you have three units. We're not going to require one and a half parking spaces, it will only be two. I I realize that may frustrate people and I understand, but that is what we are allowed to do. The other thing I would say that's important is affordable housing. We can no longer require, if it's deed-restricted affordable housing, zero parking requirements. Nursing homes and assisted living, I believe it's zero parking requirements. I feel like I'm forgetting something and I apologize, but it's. The one thing I will say is we recently had a planned unit development come through on the north side Sheik Mountain. That is entirely deed-restricted affordable. And just to clarify, because that project came through review and was approved before. This will be enacted, because the state actually doesn't require this, it was not an immediate requirement to change parking. They actually have to stick with the parking that was approved. So they they are going to have a parking space for every unit, just. Yeah, so there's there's a lot of other things, the building heights, again, I think the main thing to know about those is. The state has some pretty specific language, central commercial areas, which our central business district is. Industrial districts, which includes light industrial or industrial, they didn't specify, so it would include both. And I think high-intensity commercial districts is what the language said. The state has limited our, or sorry, restricted our ability to limit heights below sixty feet. So in height, so what that means is currently in in our industrial district and our central business district. The current zoning, we actually don't have height limits. So we were looking to oppose them anyway. Now we just, we were not able to. Limit those below sixty feet in height. So the new, the light industrial district, industrial. CBD and the general commercial, which is basically the renamed highway commercial district. Those will all be a minimum. We can't reduce. Limit height to less than sixty feet. To also try and address the 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 view shed, the the desire for. Maintaining community character and and protecting view sheds in Livingston. We have a lot of what is currently highway commercial zoning along Park Street, near the downtown as well as out. At the interchanges. And so one of the big, I would say, map amendments, but this kind of helps in part of this text amendment. One of the big map amendments that we are recommending is to rezone a lot of that. Highway commercial along Park Street closes to the city's core to light mixed use. And the light mixed use district will have a maximum height of thirty-six feet unless it's a planned unit development. In which case, as an incentive, we would offer an extra four feet for forty feet, so that would be four stories. Do you want to go to the next one? So again, table, the use table, it's table thirty, forty, the updates. We have tried to make this more user-friendly. We have changed the the use table. To try to categorize according to residential uses, community uses. Commercial uses and light industrial or industrial. And then loop them or or loop them within those categories. They're just general categories, but hopefully it makes it a little more user-friendly. We are, A is still a use that's allowed by right, means you don't have to come through any sort of a zoning review. It's just if you. You can have this use without any additional reviews. The no is the N is not allowed, so it's not allowed in that zoning district. And then C is conditional use permit required. Currently, we call that a special exception permit, but just to. Kind of align our code to be more consistent with pretty much, I think, every other code in Montana, we're changing that special exception. Name to conditional use, it's the same thing. And what that means is. The use is, can be allowed, but it has to go through a special public review process that goes before the city commission. And the reason for that is those uses in those zoning districts. We want to be able to evaluate impacts of additional traffic. Or additional activity or possibly, well, less so parking now, but just. Those uses can have some adverse impacts depending on the zoning district they're located in. And so the conditional use review. Helps to ensure that the commission can apply some conditions of approval that will mitigate those impacts. And then you'll see up there. So I will explain this again in a minute, but the big red line through this is we. Received a number of comments about supportive or transitional housing compared to assisted living. And we've recently had some discussions internally and and. At staff level and kind of realized that. Supportive or transitional housing is really just residential use and I, the more I thought about it, I don't know that it merits. Having, being listed on the use table. If you're going to have transitional housing and it's going to consist of. Ten or more units, then it requires a site plan review anyway to make sure that you have enough parking and you have the land sweeping and the buffering. So the more we thought about it, it, I, my recommendation is actually to remove that category completely. The other assisted living, we have that defined, so we would not just remove it from here, but it would also remove it from the definitions. Up in section for article two of chapter thirty.
Was this a thing that existed before? This this like category supportive transitional housing that existed in the like in the current code? So it was, it was introduced and then it was like. And now you're recommending, okay.
Yes, it was, I believe, please correct me if that's wrong if you see that, but I I believe that was a new category that was. To differentiate, that was recommended by SCJ. But it. It's a residential use, sort of like we took out tiny homes and we took out mobile homes and manufactured homes. Those are just residential uses. The the structure is looked at through the building code. I believe that supportive and transitional housing, I mean, you may have a one house with. Two families living in it. It's one house, or you may have multifamily, but if it's allowed in that zoning district. Should it really require extra review, is I think the thought behind that.
Yeah, I think comments reflected that as well.
Yeah, so just letting people know that was a kind of game time decision in the last couple days. The more we talked about it, the more it made sense to just remove it. Because it's just a regular residential use. Can you go to, I'm happy to answer questions on any of these. I just, it's a lot, so I'll let you.
Yeah, if anybody had something just.
There were two main changes that were requested by the land use board at their October fourteenth meeting. And then they met in September seventeenth. Then they requested that we have an open house and then they met October eighth and then they met again October fourteenth. So thank you very much to the land use board because they spent a lot of time on this to really make sure that they. Were happy and and comfortable with their recommendation to you. The two main requests, if you want to call them conditions, is they they requested. Kind of creating the idea of an agricultural zoning district. This is, this came about, if you've read through the comments, I think for the most part. With concerns about properties on the east side of the river, on the east side of town, there's some larger undeveloped properties. The future land use map in the growth policy identifies this as open space. Which is lovely. However, we don't have an open space zoning designation. We don't have any dedicated funding to purchase properties for open space and these are privately owned properties, so. We did not. I did not want to recommend zoning somebody's private property as open space. However. The R-one designation, which is something I sort of brought before them and I said, I think this is probably the most similar. Zoning designation that we have right now. They, the the board requested that I create the idea of of an agricultural zoning district, so. What I did, because if this is something you want to pursue, it's going to change other things throughout the code. I drafted just a simple page with some some basic. A summary of of key points of of what that district could look like and the way that I brought it to you. After looking at other codes. Basically, it's an agricultural zoning district, it's going to allow agricultural uses, also supporting residential uses. Which doesn't mean like a thirty-unit apartment complex, but it could mean that you have like a bunkhouse or. People that are agriculture workers in the property, it could mean that you have a caretaker that lives there with their family. It could be that you have a couple duplexes, people that are in that same family. I haven't fully fleshed that out, but the residential uses would need to sort of be in support of the agricultural use of the property. Manufacturing and wholesale of goods produced or raised on site would be allowed, so if you grow it. You can wholesale agriculture or if you're going to use only to to like artisan manufacturing. All all the components of that would need to be grown on site, not brought in, is the thought behind that. This district really is sort of a limited focus of agricultural. So no, we're not proposing to allow conditional uses, it is what it is. Kind of the key behind this, as as I understood it with with the request by the land use board is. To encourage open space protection. As a recommendation, looking at other codes, a minimum fifty-foot building setback from all property lines, including animal enclosures. Maximum thirty-foot height, residences similar to what we're proposing for R-one. Could be up to thirty-six feet with a roof pitch that's a certain steepness. But the agricultural building would be maxed out at thirty feet in height. Minimum five-acre lot size, kind of doesn't make sense to do this for a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot lot. The things that would be to be determined, depending on if you would like staff to pursue this. Would be like the number of livestock and animals that are allowed per acre. The district map, so which properties would be zoned, agricultural and other things. So I just provided you with a rough framework. Another request by the land use board. Was to consider, actually, the riparian setbacks. I informed them that we were, we were getting information from some environmental groups. That had these really large setbacks. I had looked at some other places in Montana that had smaller setbacks. I looked at one jurisdiction, a municipality that had like six different setbacks for six different rivers, all a different number. And the more we dispersed it internally, again, and and especially I I had some discussions with. Our city attorney and city manager gager and. I am proposing to remove the riparian setback requirements completely from this code update. Doesn't mean that they won't go in chapter thirty later, the future update. And and I don't mean like a comprehensive update, the code will continue to have some minor small updates to just. Make sure that it's it's still valid for like. Legislative requirements, that kind of thing. But for this, without having that a technical study that kind of looks at those stream reaches, the parts of the streams that are. In the city of Livingston and and how much development is on one section of stream versus. You know, this is a vacant section of street or vacant, it's not developed, so maybe you could have larger riparian setbacks. And we're just recommending to remove it from this code update at this time. One possibility would be we are going to be required by FEMA and the state DNRC very soon to update our floodplain regulations. They are. Are out of date. And so one possibility might be to include this in that update. That said. we don't have any funding, we don't have any parameters for scientific studies. So I think it's going to need some more discussion on when that will happen. Um, next please. Uh, these are a couple additional things that staff is recommending. This came up after the land use board meeting. Uh, it's not my standard practice, but this is a really, there's a lot going on with this code. And I just want to try to make sure that we, you know, nothing is missed and we're, we're um, addressing all the things that I think need to be addressed and that we've heard need to be addressed. Um, one of the original recommendations um, by, uh, I think it was uh, one of the, one of the environmental groups or one of the um, organizations was to include the term laying hens in uh, chapter or section thirty fifty-three, which basically is like two sentences saying, these are the animals that are prohibited and you need to check with the sanitarian um, to see what's allowed. When I brought this to the land use board, I had added the term laying hens. But then after um, having some correspondence with the county san, the city and county sanitarian and realizing that we already had some language in a different chapter of the code about animals. Um, I am now just recommending we remove that section, anything about animals that are allowed from the zoning code. It's addressed elsewhere in our code. Uh, laying hens or, or chickens um, that are not roosters, up to six are allowed. Uh, you have to get a permit from the sanitarian to have those, but there are allowances for that. And so that was my understanding behind that request originally was just to make sure that people can have those. And there is another, I'm just gonna, uh, there is another section of the code that, that deals with that. Um, the riparian setback requirements, as I said, we are recommending those are removed. Um, the line through the supporter transitional housing to remove that as a use from the table and as a definition um, further up in the code. And then assisted living. Um, there were some questions about why it was allowed by right in some areas and not by others. The definition that we have an assisted living um, is not just the people that live there. So not just the residential use, but it's also the support staff, nurses, caretakers, whatever um, that are part of that. So it is a bit more intensive than just a standard residential use typically. Um, and it is typically also more than one. If, if it's just one house, it's just a residence, right? Um, so that is why for R one, which is supposed to be looking at low density residential housing, we have made a recommendation that it is not allowed in R one. Um, it's a conditional use in R two and the reason for that is so that we can evaluate the impacts, potential negative impacts to the neighborhood in R two. If there's an assisted living facility that is recommended, um, parking, uh, signage, noise, that kind of stuff. And figure out how to maybe uh, assign conditions to mitigate those impacts. Um, but I, I think it makes sense to not completely exclude them from R two. Um, especially people that have multiple parcels that they can kind of put together. So that's why I have this conditional, everything else is kind of, it's allowed anywhere that residential uses are allowed. Um, we have, it's not, we're recommending it's not allowed in industrial or um, uh, public and community uses. Uh, next slide please. So for the zoning maps, like I said, um, these are not, we're not asking you to take action on these tonight, but I do think it's important to kind of inform the code, the text updates that we're bringing you. So did you figure that out, Karen? If you just click on it, it should bring you to the story back page.
Yeah, it did.
Even if you, even if you're trolling it.
I, I tried, but I'm sure.
That could be me, it could be you, I don't know.
Okay, I'm just a city manager.
But this, I, I feel like this page is the best way to look at this and it's kind of hard to capture in static images that I put into a PowerPoint. So this is the page that SCJ created for us and I think they did a fabulous job. And if you go far, yeah, the new and old zoning maps, um, it's a slider. Um, I will tell you this happened in land use board. For some reason it's blowing up the text and it's minimizing the map. So I don't know if you can figure out, I think there's a, a maximizer button at the top.
Hey, it, it, yeah, like I said, I'm just a.
Yeah.
I'm gonna see, oh, that guy right there.
Yeah.
Um, oh, that's my bad.
Just a city plan.
Way to go, city man.
Um, uh, so this slider is on the left. If you, if you slide over to the right, um, and I realize it's kind of busy, but if you slide that over to the right, everything on the left side is showing you our current zoning. Um, and then if you slide it back over, it's allowing you to see what we're proposing. Um, so a, a key thing I would say to recognize in this, and I apologize because it, the, the yellow um, outlines, ignore those, those are for the um, the gateway overlay district. And that will kind of be determined depending on the final map that you adopt. We'll come behind that because since the gateway overlay district is assigned to commercialized properties. Um, we need to make sure how those are zoned. But the big thing I would say, two things to take note of. Um, the blue, that's, that's all along Park Street. It's out by um, up highway ten where it splits off from Park. It's, if you zoom out, it's also at the interchanges. That is currently our highway commercial district. It is our, our most intensive, other than the downtown, um, commercial district. Um, we are recommending, oh, it won't let you. Um, we are recommending that the the parcels or the properties that are zoned um, highly commercial right now, for the most part, uh, and near the downtown, so approaching the downtown, I would say from maybe Seventh Street, maybe a little south of Seventh Street. Is that Town and Country right there? Yeah. Um, both sides of Park Street until you get to about the granery on, I think it's, it's a K Street apartments, the granery apartments. Um, we're recommending that be changed to light mixed use. Um, one of the reasons for that, as I said, is the way that we have, we have defined light mixed use in this code update. It's not as intensive, it's not an, an intensive general commercial district, the way we've described it and defined it. Um, and so we would have the ability to go with the height, below sixty feet. If we simply left it as general commercial, it would be sixty feet all through there. And as you know, not only from the growth policy, but we heard a lot in the zoning update process, um, that people really character uh, view sheds were very important. So this was one way, um, th- this is why we, some people are calling it down zoning. Um, I, I would just say it's, it's incorporating some other considerations like height and intensity of use. Um, another key thing I would say is um, we are recommending to shrink the central business district, if you will. Um, as I said, that, that's the bright pink and Grant, if you toggle over to the right, um, you will see that pink, it's supposed to be the same color pink, but it's, it's reduced in size. Um, there are several blocks that are currently zoned CBD that really, they're just residential blocks. Um, like uh, uh, Second Street between Park and Geyser and half of the stuff all the way to the park is just houses. So to keep that central business district and to understand that we would not be able to restrict heights below sixty feet. A concern for me would be somebody buying up several properties, getting rid of the houses and building whatever they want. Now, I don't think that's necessarily an immediate concern. I mean, people, we've had no height limits in our downtown up to this point and, and nobody's coming in with a hundred story skyscraper. But um, it would be uh, it would, it would protect those residential districts and keep future development more in line. And, and the recommended zoning that we have come up with for that would be the light mixed use. That provides a bit of a buffer between the central business district that has those sixty foot height allowances with the more intensive uses. Um, and then you would have some light mixed use on the outskirts, which goes down to thirty six feet in height. Um, or forty if it's, if it's a planned unit development. And then you have your R two medium density residential zoning, which has that um, thirty six foot height limit with the, the certain pitch of roof. Um, and so that was the thought behind that, was to sort of provide a buffer um, to allow those residential neighborhoods that are currently zoned central business district to, to maintain their character. Um, but still allow for um, a mix of uses, which you know, if, if I had somebody that, yeah, they could put in a quarter grocery store now, but they can still do it in a light mixed use district. And then I can walk to it from across the street in my R two house. Um, the one thing I will say that is not right now, as we've proposed it, and this is where the ag district comes in. Um, the Watson property, that large parcel that's on the east side of the river and the south side of the river, yeah, I guess it's the east side. Um, that's out by the hospital. You'll see in red there originally, what we brought to the land use board was planned unit development, although that property did not go through the process that we recently um, adopted for planned unit developments. It does have a development agreement tied to any future development on that property. That um, basically outlines what can be done. It's gone as far as there are a cer, a certain number of home sites, they've actually GPS the locations. So um, it's, the zoning is, I'm not going to say it's perfunctory, uh, if that's the right word, but it's, the development agreement basically is going to guide or, or regulate whatever development happens there. Um, the land use board and, and several of the environmental groups that commented uh, were not happy with, tha- that was not their preference to have the planned unit development designation for that property. Um, so that's where the agricultural zoning district um, creation came in. It would also, um, my understanding is again, we're not talking about the map yet, but this would also apply to um, the glassy baby properties. I think it's Spoonful Farms is what their LLC. Um, that's my understanding of the intent behind this. So that it would better align with the growth policy. The future land use map that's currently in the growth policy. Um, I think those are the two big map amendments. Um, and like I said, I, I, I wanted to really go through the, the reasoning behind why we shrunk the CBD a bit and why we re-zoned some of that highway commercial around the CBD to light mixed use versus um, the higher density mixed use or uh, making it general commercial. Um, so uh, there's a also strategic alignment with the growth policy. Did I remember the height images? Oh, there are actually a lot of questions.
Would you want to go back and do some of that more?
Yeah, just so you can see, um.
It's good.
Yeah, it is, it is good. Um, that was, well, it's actually, I put up static, I mean, come on, it's good.
It is good.
Um, I put it actually in the PowerPoint.
There you go.
But yeah.
Did you ask for this?
Um, yes, we, we did. This actually was something that Jim Woodall, our, our building director said, hey, this would really be good if we could see this, so.
So good, Jim.
Jim is, Jim was a huge part of the work that we did on this. Um, so thanks, Jim. I hope you're at home enjoying your cocktail.
Yeah, Jim had a front ear to the beach.
Um.
He, he really wanted to be here today, especially.
No, um, so on the left is, is the height limits for our current zoning code. For the districts, the industrial and the downtown, which is that, the bright purple and the orange. We, those have no height limits. We had to set something so you could kind of tell. So we, we assigned a thousand feet in height to be the height limit. Otherwise it would just obscure everything else. So on the left is current. And actually, Grant, can you pull it back over the right again? Because I want to point out, um, along Park Street, that, that blue again is, is highway commercial. And that is basically in the new code, the, the text description will be um, general commercial. The sixty foot height allowance. So if you slide that over and now you look at the light mixed use versus what the general commercial would look like. More faster now.
I like the slow reveal.
So you can see the sixty foot limit that we've capped the CBD in the industrial is reflected here. And then does it actually? Can you see where it's still general commercial?
Um, no.
Be able to listen out, but basically it's, it's, if you wanted to look at all the Park Street being at the same height as the downtown is, that's what it would look like. That light mixed use again takes it from sixty, which is the minimum we can require. Um, which is what it is now on there to thirty six feet or forty in a PU date. Um.
Now you can throw the north side somewhat and talk about how different that is.
Um, and so one, the area that this is really important, I would say on the north side, um, there are three square blocks, maybe four square blocks that are along Front Street immediately to the west of Fifth Street. Um, and those right now are zoned R three. The height limit allowed in R three is fifty feet. Um, we are proposing to rezone those as light mixed use. It still allows for, uh, and again, the, the, the R three designation right now in our code is really just residential. It's just a higher density residential. So we've sort of, I would say, split that into two districts, if you will. Um, we have a light mixed use which allows that residential, it's just kind of capping the height. So I guess that's a, that limits the density. It allows for more of the commercial uses and then the high density mixed use is similar uses to that. Um, it is, but it's a higher density, it allows up to that fifty foot height limit. Um, might be fifty-five, is it fifty-five, fifty, sorry. Um, which is the same as R three, but we're proposing to allow some more commercial uses there. Um, so that is the main thing I would say on the north side. I think that will help with preserving those view sheds of people that are in those R two neighborhoods that are looking towards um, Sleeping Giant and Livingston Peak. Um, you know, right now, there's nothing there that's fifty foot tall, that's fifty feet tall. But the fact that somebody could put those there and they're right kind of smack into that iconic view down Main and Second, depending where you're looking from. Um, is, is why we did this also. Um, there's very little commercial um, development on the north side right now. Part of the growth policy is to um, increase um, the potential for um, some more uh, commercial development. That's not to take away from the central business district. That is to provide some amenities and um, and services to people on the north side so they don't have to drive to the south side all the time. Um, as we know, there's a lot of traffic, there's few crossings. Um, and so being able to provide, um, one of the, the land use board members mentioned um, that Matt's meets used to be on the north side, I think. Um, maybe uh, on Chinook, I think it is. Or Washington School, but she was like, yeah, it's great, we could go there, we could like grab some food, grab a lot of wine, grab some milk. You know, the things that they wouldn't necessarily have to come back over to the south side for or over to the south side. So the thought behind that is not just to align with the growth policy, but to provide um, some neighborhood scale amenities that will allow people to kind of stay near their homes, but also possibly walk or ride their bike to it, they don't necessarily need a car. Um, so that's the thought behind that, without making that general commercial or high intensity commercial both. Because that more intensive use right now, there's not that, that good vehicular connection across. Um, and uh, also for the view shed preservation. Um, anything else on the north side?
I really appreciate that, thank you. I think the only other thing is the same thing applies further, what direction is that? West?
Eastish. Are you talking about wellness center?
No, I was talking about the other direction, like further west where he just swiped.
The neighborhood and commercial.
Yeah, like it, there is a, yes, there's a very small area of neighborhood commercial on the other side. It's basically their Sun Avenue comes into where Front Street curves up and it's like seven properties. They all kind of have, I think almost every property that's developed there has kind of a um, uh, like a not commercial, it's an industrial kind of looking structure where one half of it is, is a residence and the other half is like a shop or something like that. Um, the height limit there is twenty-seven feet, um, which is lower than what we're proposing. But the neighborhood commercial district just um, when looking at everything else and again, taking into consideration the comments that we heard from you um, a couple of months ago, that I heard from you about, you know, trying to streamline the code. Um, that was one of the zoning districts we are recommending be removed. So right now, if you want to look at it, we have um, R three, which is high density. Which is high density residential, we have a mixed use zone district, which is mostly along, mostly along Garnier Avenue and Mous Lane. Very small areas of the city. There's a couple other spots, we have. Sorry, I'm missing something. I think those are the main two, right, and then, yeah, so we're basically saying to take the R three. Yeah, mixed use R three in the neighborhood commercial and and they're sort of being combined with the two, I would say, the light mixed use. And the high density residential.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and by the Wellness Center, the the Future Wellness Center. We did rezone or recommending rezoning along. Galatin, thank you. Some of the, that first block along Galatin to a light mixed use, again, to. Allow for some more amenities, we're gonna have more traffic going over there, would it be great if you could go to the Wellness Center and then. Pick up your groceries on the way home without crossing back over. That was just kind of the thought behind that. But also not so much that, again, we're building up and we're changing that character of the neighborhood and and and. Blocking the view sheds that people love.
This is a good time to. Take a break. If you're done.
I think that's the main, is that it? No, no, no.
That's up to you, yeah, I mean.
I think.
You could probably use a sip of Scotch or a break.
Can I come?
You, not me.
So uh uh these are all, and I'm happy to address address these, but these are strategic alignment with the growth policy, kind of the places that they do align. I actually probably should have pulled up those highlights, I think those were more in the in the follow up meetings with the land use board to kind of. Reiterate some stuff, but there's several ways that this aligns with the growth policy. These are just the criteria that we look at for any zoning regulations, it needs to comply with Montana code annotated, which we believe it does. And then just the recommendations that you. Adopt the first or pre the first reading of the ordinance.
Just taking out that one line, correct, that's your update was the. Removing the supportive transitional housing.
Removing supportive transitional housing, removing the riparian code, oh, you mean added.
That's the only, that's the only thing that would be in addition to your staff report, right, is they're removed, otherwise you already have the riparian codes. And the ag is a question mark. For us today, but it's currently not included.
The animals are included now, though, you wanted that removed.
Animals, they are included?
I don't.
No, they're not.
Animals remain covered by chapter four.
Yeah, I think I had removed it from the text, if it's still there, then.
I don't know which. I think, I think it's come, it's the. The land use sport, I think it's highlighted in yellow, so they recommended it, but there's a line through it, so I think the final recommendation is take out laying heads. Cause it's covered in a different section of code.
Yes.
So the only, the only change we would make in the motion is taking, if we follow your recommendation.
Would be to take out the supportive and transitional house as a category in these two.
Okay, thank you.
And the definition.
And the definition.
Thank you, right, that was.
There actually is no definition of it, it's just a thing.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Jen, nice work. Yeah, it's good.
I'll make a motion for a ten minute break.
Will return at approximately seven twenty. Meeting of Livingston City Commission, we convene is at seven twenty. Do I have motion for hundreds thirty sixty four? As a joke.
Joke, okay.
Clarifying question, but I guess. Commissioner Wilich.
Have a question about the riparian setback. Removal request. And that includes the river as well, correct, the Yellowstone River. I guess that's my question is, does it include that?
Yeah, fantastic question, Commissioner, yes, at this time, all riparian setbacks have been, all references to riparian setbacks have been removed. From the proposed text amendment to chapter thirty, and as the the planning director discussed a little bit earlier. It was really in recognition that we have several different types and sizes of rivers that move through the city. And perhaps a one size fits all approach would not necessarily be overly effective. And so we've. Thought that it would be appropriate to take the time and really do an analysis on each of those rivers, really, there's three principal ones that that moves through the city. And come up with specific recommendations for each of those that take into account the specifics of of each.
I have two other questions that go with that, are there any properties that bisect the Yellowstone River?
Properties themselves that bisect the Yellowstone River, no, I do not believe so.
Okay, and are either of the cricks navigable?
No, I do not believe they're considered navigable waterways. That's it, my question is, thank you.
May I, because mine are on his. But. Are there still federal floodplain? Regulations, so Jen, can you? Grant, either one, elaborate on that and what that means for properties along a river that I'm assuming are in a floodplain.
Yeah, absolutely, and I will, I will try to hit it, and then Jen, when I miss, you feel free to jump in on, how about that, so. As of, as of today, the Yellowstone River is the only one of our waterways that has been mapped. Along with Bowman Creek, Fleishman Creek has not been mapped, and so. The flood plains and floodways that have been mapped still do have federal regulations. Like can't build in the in the regulatory floodway, and so those are all prevailing, what was being contemplated were. Additional local restrictions that might create, like the director mentioned. You know, riparian vegetated buffers or building setbacks. And that is the the area that we have taken a pause and said, let's do some more analysis before we get there.
And on that. How quickly could we do that type of analysis, do we have the funding to do that, what? What does that look like, so as to say, like, how far down the road are we from? Doing something like that if we don't do something now?
Uh, you know, it it really does come down to identifying the funding for that. We we have identified some grant opportunities. Certainly, you know, we have city fund balance and the general fund that would be used for this. We know that the the city of Whitefish undertook a similar analysis several years ago, where they actually went and looked at every specific waterway in the. In the city, so I I would imagine we could do it in under a year if if it was the will of the commission.
And do we have any update on the updated? FEMA maps, I heard through the grapevine that Nadine is funded at least at this point, or will continue to keep her job at the moment. But I'm just curious if we have any updates on that.
Yeah, it's our understanding that the state personnel have funding for, and through about the end of March is our understanding. And so there is some level of work that is continuing, but our federal partners have largely been called off of the project at this point. And then, you know, I I would point out to the to the commission. You know. Because that work is in somewhat of a state of flux, you may recall, there was the question, Fleishman Creek has never been mapped. Through the federal floodplain mapping process, and that was one decision point that was, you know, to the commission and. Sure, was whether or not to extend that floodplain mapping and and have rate federal federally regulatory. Mapping applied to Fleishman Creek as it is the Yellowstone River and Bowman Creek.
And one more question on on the same vein.
Grant, can you chalk up just a little bit more at the very end of your. Comments, you just kind of fade off, I just, I can barely hear you, and that's why I said I'd hear this.
So on that same vein. I've lost it for a second.
You're talking about Fleishman being included or not in the federal?
Oh, yeah. Are there other communities in Montana that have? Riparian setbacks, so to say that there, this is an allowed. Setback within the state of Montana, it's a legal thing. That's my question.
Oh, oh, absolutely, there's, there's a large number of communities in the state that have setbacks, and I I mentioned the city of Whitefish. They they have a rather robust, you know, even buffer zone, where a vegetated buffer zone where. As the director indicated, there's, there really is no, you know, pruning, planting, this, that, or the other within a certain designated area of the highway.
It's pretty up to date.
Yeah, I'd I'd seen some comments in here, so I thought I'd ask the question that I was on record, so I think, yeah. I think that's all I have for the moment. For clarifying.
Of of course, Commissioner, just to to add, you know. Riparian setbacks are just one type of setback, there are setbacks that already exist in the Livingston Municipal Code for a number of different reasons, and so. You know, the the construct of a setback is not foreign here in the city of.
Thank you, I think I yield for the moment.
Do we need microphones, can you hear? We do need microphones.
You need microphones, I mean, just even if you just pass one back.
Can you guys hear in the back? No, okay. It's like a fifty fifty.
Yeah.
People can hear.
Oh, yeah, come this way before he's turned on, turn it off.
This is dangerous territory over here with that.
Come around this way, yeah. I know, I touch it.
It's good.
That's it, when you.
Yeah, well, if if you're fine as long as it's red, it's.
I think, let's keep it by you, I think that it's your voice that's not carrying, maybe just because of the directionality and like.
And our questions are shorter, maybe we can. Speak up, people.
Yeah, just a little loud.
I think, I think lower voices sometimes like are harder to hear.
Yeah, timber, yeah. Okay.
So I yielded for.
Thank you.
Clarifying question.
Any other commissioners clarifying? Commissioner Alliance, you have the floor.
So can we get a little bit more insight into what happened to the? High density residential. Classification. R three, used to be R three.
For toilets.
So are you asking about location wise or?
So I'm. Tonight, I'm gonna try and keep my comments to just the ordinance, I I do think it's. I do think that the ordinance goes with the map, but tonight I'm gonna focus on just the ordinance, so. We used to have in our three districts, and it's not proposed in here, and I understand. Kind of nebulously that it is now light mixed use and high intensity mixed use, but. I'd like more information on on how that happened and. How those two new classifications encompass or don't encompass. The previous high density residential classification.
Okay, sure, I'll I'll try. So I I would say there's not necessarily a direct correlation, at least. And 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 for this, I'm gonna take a step back and think about the the location, there's not a direct correlation, like we subbed this out for this, the only one I can think of. That is the case where it was like, we're calling it this and we're calling it this, but it's. Is general commercial, so our highway commercial is general commercial. The, we have the neighborhood commercial district, it sounds like you're not super concerned with that one.
Uh, well, I'm I'm just. Which classifications are absorbing R three, or how does R three map to the new classifications of of uses?
So I would say the most direct correlation for for R three to be reflected in the new code and map. Would be. The high density mixed use, which is allows for that same level, it's same height allowance, it's fifty feet. As the R three. I think the main difference is that the R three. Doesn't allow any sort of commercial uses, and we are proposing that the high density mixed use. Allows that higher density residential, but also allows some of that mix of uses, if we just called it. High intensity mixed use or. If the focus was not, because really, this is, this is about the residential, allowing that residential density with some smaller. I guess neighborhood scale, maybe more walkable types of of commercial uses. We have to sort of. Economism with the fact that if 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 the district is intended to be what our current mixed use is zoned. I think there's a chance that we would have to allow that sixty foot item.
Okay, that that's fine.
If you if you have more questions, I can.
And that's, that's all I've got for that. The way that I'm interpreting the the use table on. Page eighty seven. It looks to me like. And I and I understand that this is a. Outgrowth of changes to state policy, but I just want to make sure that I'm that I'm interpreting it right. Residential uses are allowed in all districts except for industrial. And public community, is that correct?
It's correct. Single family uses.
Right, yeah, so, yeah, I I get that. So relatedly. It looks like short term rentals, types one and two, would then be allowed in every. Every classification that allows for residential development, except for light industrial. So I'm curious. Why light industrial was chosen to exclude short term rentals and nothing else was.
Yes, so two years ago, the state passed a law that said that for. Commercial districts. We have to allow five or more units. Of residential developments, at the time. This this really kind of affected the the neighborhood commercial, because. Our code before that time allowed a residential use if it was, if it was the same owner of the business as the the commercial use. So that's that one street along, along, one part along Sun Avenue for the most part. When that state law change came before the commission. You all requested that we make it not just five or more, we make it one, two, three, four, five, so any number of residential uses. Whether they were mixed use or not could be allowed where the state has said you have to allow them. Light industrial with the new code is the only one where that applies. So because a short term rental is typically just a single unit, and it's not. Three or more, which is what we're showing for. Light industrial for the allowed uses, if you look at like single family residents, I think it says not allowed in light industrial unless it's it's three or more. Is that right? Because short term rentals are typically not. Three or more.
But couldn't it be one of the three?
If it's one of the three, we're not allowing residences there at the one level, is that?
No, but so if there are three residences. In light industrial, so it it.
Like a multifamily.
Multifamily, three residences. One of those, any one of those. Would have the potential to be. A short term rental, but 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 for some reason, and this this is what I'm getting at, is why was that area? In the code chosen to exclude short term rental. But no other part of the code where res- where residential uses are allowed, are we excluding excluding it?
Yeah, it's a fantastic question, Commissioner, and there's actually a few reasons that that we have seen examples of. Locally and nationally, one from, there's kind of, I guess, two aspects, right? One is just frankly from a user standpoint of of the short term rentals. It may not always be clear to a short term renter that they are renting a unit that is located in a light industrial area of the city. And light industrial areas, you might recall, under the noise ordinance and some others have. And light industrial areas, you might recall, under the noise ordinance and some others have, um, just greater allowed uses that might not be totally compatible with residential use. And so, um, putting short-term rental, you know, occupiers in that light industrial zone seems prone to potentially create some conflicts there with the other users in the light industrial area, right? Basically, uh, calling code enforcement, well, we've got a noise problem here. This guy's outstanding at seven AM or eight AM. It's a little bit loud. I'm trying to sleep over here. And so it, it tries to strike a more harmonious balance of uses.
So it's, it's for the, the comfort of the customer.
Uh, in, in some aspects, yes. And also it, it lightens a little bit of load on, on our code enforcement. And then also, um, as, as you probably know, just from a, um, a land use standpoint and a value of land standpoint, residential uses can typically have a bit of a, um, they command higher rents, right? And so when it comes to preservation of light industrial spaces for light industrial uses, one of the ways that, that, that those light industrial uses can be maintained is simply to make that land less attractive or less able to achieve higher rents that might come with the short-term rental use. Just as we see long-term residential uses displaced by short-term uses. A lot of communities have seen light industrial uses displaced by short-term rental uses.
Yeah, I'm great. That makes perfect sense.
So there's, there's a few reasons why we discussed it.
Thank you. Um, last question, clarifying question. Um, on page eighty-five of the packet, uh, under R two, um, it says neighborhood serving retail or office uses are permitted, provided they have little to no impact on traffic. Um, I expected it's meant to say of, or on the surrounding area, it says or, um, surrounding neighborhood. How, um, should future commissioners interpret little to no impact on traffic? Um, and who will be responsible for producing those estimates?
I'd invite the, the director who, yeah.
What I was gonna say was, um, the determination, um, and, and this is tied to, um, we did make some changes to the own home occupancy, um, home occupation section. Um, and there's language in here basically that says, you know, the low, the low impact. Um, the planning director, for lack of a better, right now, there, there is a lot of, or the zoning administrator, I should say. There is some leeway in the zoning code. Um, if there's a use that is not, uh, identified in the code and somebody is proposing that use, um, it's actually the zoning administrator right now that has the authority to determine the most similar use, um, for parking, um, joint parking agreements, that kind of thing. Um, requirements, I think that's also under zoning administrator. Um, and so the way this is currently envisioned is the zoning administrator looks at something, um, again, if it's not coming through, um, a review process, if it's, i- if you're asking if, if, if we have, if we have put it into numbers, no. If we have put the number of trips, the number of traffic, the, um, that language is covered. I'm sorry, I actually brought up my clean one. I tried to learn, Grant, maybe you can help me out. Um, there's language that we took from the, the occupational, the home occupations about what would be considered negative impact, I guess, that I, the zoning administrator can use for guidance. And I don't have the same numbers. I don't have a packet, I'm sorry.
Uh, that's fine. But I, I, I'll, um, the, the answer I'm getting is that we don't have figures for it right now and that the decision will be made by the zoning administrator.
That's the way it's envisioned.
Yeah, um, I'll, I'll share my thoughts on that in the times of purple. And that's, that's all I have for questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Lyons. You got the floor, T. S. desire.
I don't think I have any questions, additional questions right now.
I don't as well. Yes, at this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Any public comment on the zoning code update ordinance three zero six four? Please stay at step forwards, speak your name. We have four minutes.
Uh, good evening, Mission Randy Carpenter, eleven O eight South Black and Bozeman, representing friends of Park County. Thank you, uh, for the time, the opportunity to comment here. Um, so we commend the work of the staff consultants and planning board developing the zoning code that will, uh, update, that will in many respects meet the community's future needs. Um, in particularly, we enthusiastically support the proposed new codes, uh, replacement of the city's auto-oriented highway commercial zoning with the new low-density mixed-use zoning district. This switch, uh, will set the community up for, we believe, uh, more housing options and vitality in the city's core, improve housing choice and affordability, uh, meet the stated desire in the growth policy for less auto-dependent and more pedestrian-oriented growth uh, patterns. It's really an important major change for Livingston. We also support the new coast limit on building heights in the downtown and, uh, thirty-six feet in the proposed low, uh, density mixed-use zoning district. Um, sorry. So, you know, for the core of the community, we, we think these, uh, the, the city's proposing some very positive changes. Um, and our, our primary concerns is maybe you have read or with the outline areas of the city. Uh, I'd like to note that many of our recommendations were shaped by a build-out analysis of vacant parcels under the proposed zoning. Uh, we use, uh, GIS data, Montana cadastral data, identified all vacant Livingston parcels by their proposed, uh, zoning. So based upon this analysis, we estimated the build-out, the proposed R one and R two zoning districts only, not including residential that could be allowed in the mixed-use districts, would yield over five thousand, uh, dwelling units. Um, uh, again, does not, uh, uh, include, uh, potential development in mixed-use zones. You know, don't know what the eventual blend of residential commercial would be. And LMU, uh, district has no minimum lot size. Um, and assuming that Livingston's twenty-ten to twenty-twenty-four annual growth rate of one point six five percent annual stays constant, uh, the proposed R one and R two, uh, parcels would contain over fifty years' worth of residential growth. Of course, if you were to add in the potential, potential residential development in the proposed mixed-use zones, that would yield many more year, uh, years of residential supply. But, uh, you know, if we count only the areas proposed for R two, uh, that's almost three thousand homes. Uh, enough land for over thirty years of development, which we think is great, right? Affordable housing. Ensuring an adequate supply, you know, is a really crucial factor, uh, in, in promoting affordable housing. And through the proposed R two zoning, this code would do that. But at the same time, we believe that some environmentally sensitive and outlined areas that are, as pointed out by Montana Freshwater Partners, high-risk flood zones should be zoned at a lower density. We're particularly concerned about the proposed HMU district in the northeasternmost area of the city, which could allow for almost four thousand homes. And the adjacent R one zoning could add over two thousand more homes to the city. Um, we think those two areas on HMU and R one clearly not in accordance with the growth policy. Um, we therefore recommend that the city create and apply an agricultural zoning district to these areas. The R one zoning areas and the HMU, uh, so what, but when landowners in this district desire to develop at a higher density, uh, sometime in the future, they could apply for a PUD under that chapter of the code for a more creative, environmentally sensitive uh, development. So last thing, we appreciate the unanimous recommendation, the planning board for the consider, consideration of Ag District. We do think that five acre, uh, minimum is too small to meet the purpose, general purpose of agricultural zoning, urge the commission to consider something significantly higher, more like a forty-acre minimum lot size. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Randy.
Kara Eddy.
Hello.
Livingston, Montana, um, members of the Livingston City Commission. I, I understand that staff has recommended riparian buffer and setback requirements to be withdrawn from the current text amendments and instead be considered during the forthcoming FEMA update to the city's regulations. Dressing up a taking in FEMA clothes is still a taking. Livingston does have very unique stream reaches already developed with houses, streets, fences, et cetera. Property owners take good care of those reaches because we love them. Sixty-three concerned citizens signed the petition against riparian setbacks previously submitted to the city planner. This shows strong opposition to the taking of private property for public purposes. I continue to support the protection of private property rights as outlined in the United States Constitution and the Montana Constitution. I oppose private property taken for public use. I have copies for each of you of my statement, the petition against riparian setbacks with sixty-three signatures and a letter from Herta L. Lund, Lund Law, P L L C. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
So there's.
Yeah, you can put it terrible.
Okay, there's seven, one for each and one extra. Thank you.
Thank you.
Becky Byrd, four oh two South Eighth Street. Um, I would just like to follow up with Ms. Eddy's comments about, um, the riparian setbacks. I think it was really smart to remove that language from the code because it's a special circumstance, particularly, I think, along Fleishman Creek, which is right in the heart of downtown. It is a property rights issue. I don't know that the city really wants to get into a tug of war with property owners, but it, it gives the city, in the commission particularly, an opportunity to show good faith with a significant number of citizens who live in town where this can be a real significant and troubling issue for them down the road. I would encourage the commission, and as we move forward, that we consider the significant impact of riparian setbacks to people who live in town on this waterway and what it could do to their ability to control their own property. I know we're not doing anything like in the immediate near term, but it does cre- I think it is going to require a lot of thought, a lot of discussion, a lot of community engagement. And when we move forward, I will hope the commission would do everything in its power to make sure to notify every single property owner. This will impick, and I'm talking specifically about Fleishman Creek, to contact those people and encourage them to get engaged because I, this is something that I think the commission in the future is really going to have to pay particular attention to and be very sensitive to, um, as we move ahead, um, with discussing uh, the riparian setback. So, thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Linda Mar, one thirteen South M Street, and I try to talk loud enough. And I do want to also thank all of you for your service. Even though I've been critical at times, I really, I'm starting to appreciate how much goes into this and it's pretty enormous. So, thank you very, very, very much for doing it. I sure wouldn't want to. Just because I don't have time. I mean, anyway, um, my question is, if the state is saying that we can't provide parking for affordable housing and assisted living senior, uh, places and, and so on and so forth, what are we gonna do? I mean, this is insane. This is insane. So, yeah.
We agree. I, yeah, I agree. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for that sponsorship.
Any other public comment in the room regarding ordinance three zero six four? All right, I'm gonna move online. I see three hands up, mom.
Jeanette's first.
Um, Jeanette Blank, come off mute. We have four minutes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, thanks for the opportunity to comment. Um, I just had a quick, uh, just a couple of quick questions. Um, first, thank you for all of the work that has gone into, um, updating the ordinance at this point. I know this is a huge lift for the city, so I appreciate that. Um, I do have a question, if I can get a little bit more clarification on the map, um, the map amendment resol- I guess that, that becomes a resolution. What that process is, because I know it's kind of different with the new leg- state legislature, legislator approvals. But, um, when, you know, when, how does this notice? When does the public have an opportunity to comment, to submit comments? And then when you are looking at this, the map amendments, um, I really appreciate the addition of the, um, or consideration of the Ag Zone, uh, because I think that's an important aspect of trying to com- comply with or, or, um, agree with the, the growth policy map. Um, I do think that the comments that Freshwater Partners submitted, I think it was the October, um, twenty-eighth comments have a lot of really important maps that relate to, um, existing flood hazards, past flood hazards, things like that. And I will say that the resolution of those maps that were included, the resolution of those maps that are in the, um, the meeting packet is really bad. You can't even, it's, a lot of it's undecided, illegible. And so I don't know if that's something where, um, you can get the, the, um, comments that we submitted directly from the, um, planning director, or if we can resubmit those. But that's really, really important, um, information to take into consideration, to really um, understand the flood risk, um, and see that data as you're considering the Ag Zone. And that is, that is all I have. Thank you.
Jeanette, can you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, Jeanette Blank, uh, four one eight South Ninth Street, uh, representing Montana Freshwater Partners.
Thank you, Jeanette. Okay, Catherine Daly, you're up next. Feel free to come off mute. Yeah.
Great. Hi, everybody. Uh, Catherine Daly, I'm the Park County Housing Coalition Program Manager with HRDC in Livingston at one twenty-one South Second Street. Um, thanks again for the opportunity to comment and for all the consideration that's gone into this process to date. Um, I echo Jeanette's comments that this is indeed a heavy lift. Um, I just want to underline some of the comments that I preferred, provided earlier today in writing. Um, yes, I am one of the people who would characterize some of the proposed changes to Livingston's core as down zoning. When you re- rezone a high-density residential district as light mixed use, that's down zoning. When you rezone a highway commercial area that allows for multi-filled, multifamily buildings up to sixty feet tall to light mixed use, that's down zoning. And when you rezone parts of the central business district as light mixed use, that's down zoning. Um, my contention, my primary concern with the regulation as proposed is that down zoning Livingston's core contradicts the growth policy and does not contribute to housing affordability or diversification of our housing stock. As I mentioned in my letter, it, uh, undermines the growth policies, future land use map, uh, undermines, uh, strategy three point one point one point one, encourage additional residential density within the downtown area of the city. It undermines strategy three point four point three point two, encourage development near transit routes and active transportation infrastructure to promote development that produces minimal strain on the environment and existing transportation infrastructure. And it undermines objective five point one point four, which is promote a mix of housing within neighborhoods that supports a variety of household income. that supports a variety of household income levels, household age groups, and housing types. I will also add that down zoning Livingston's core, to the extent proposed in the regulation is also out of step and map is out of step with Livingston's downtown master plan, which includes a goal of encouraging the development of new housing options in the downtown to bring increased vitality. To meet this goal, the plan recommends, quote, "allowing greater flexibility for middle-density housing and/or appropriately scaled live-work units in residential areas in the downtown study area." That study proposed heights ranging from thirty to sixty feet. I want to address a couple of other things that have come up. One is that, you know, regardless of the number of new homes that are brought on by the proposed zoning regulation, those homes aren't guaranteed to be affordable to prospective buyers and renters in our community. I mentioned in my written comment from today that the current gap between what H R D C anticipates it will cost to build a whole neighborhood of duplex condominiums in Gardner and what local folks earning the area median income is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per home. I actually got an update unexpectedly on that gap this afternoon, and it's now a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per home. And that's again because the cost to build, buy, rent, or renovate just greatly outstrips what local folks can afford. So even if you're benefiting from efficiency of scale and no zoning like they have in Gardner and you're a developer that specializes in below-market rate home construction, it's very challenging to create homeownership opportunities right now. If you need an example or closer home, Tom Blue Rock's gorgeous new twelve-hundred-square-foot condos down on South Eighth Street are priced at four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which with a six-point-three percent or so interest rate would still require twenty-eight-hundred-dollar month payment. If you put twenty percent down, that monthly cost is seven hundred dollars a month, more than the median Park County homeowner can afford. I'll also add that the gap between median rent and what a renter can afford is conservatively four hundred dollars a month. Because of these gaps, another point I wanted to make is incentives are critical for the development of housing affordable to our community members, and so it would be most efficient to align moderate-density development as of right in areas like the Livingston Urban Renewal District where significant grant funding is available to support the preservation and development of housing.
Catherine, time is up. I'm sorry.
Okay, incidentally, this district lies at the heart of Livingston's core. May I just add two more sentences?
Yeah, I let Randy go a little bit. I'll give you a leeway.
I'll also add that location matters significantly resident affordability because proximity to good services and transportation are also part of overall costs. And this is, the transportation component is particularly critical when we think about changes to the state's parking requirements. In my comment from October, I overlaid all the wind rider stops onto the proposed zoning map. We have the highest density of wind rider stops in the downtown core. It's easy to forget, we have folks in our community who are going to work, getting their kids to school, going to doctor's appointments, and running errands without cars, and people in our community who aren't of age to drive or are unable to drive for other reasons.
Thanks, Catherine. That's a good job at some point. Thank you. I appreciate it. Layan Kennedy, come off mute. State your name and address.
She's off mute, but we can't hear her.
Can't hear you, Layan. You're off mute. Following him up. Still can't hear you, Layan. Can you hear us? Okay, we're gonna move on to someone else while you get that. Do you get it? Got it now, Layan? We'll come back to you, Layan. We're gonna move over to Jack Luther. Go ahead, Jack. Come off mute.
Hey, Jack Luther, one oh four South Fifth Street. Just a couple of comments. I want to give my profound thanks to everyone on the city staff, the Land Use Board, the commission, everybody that was involved in this. I think it's been a long process, a really needed process, and I'm really happy about it, especially Director Severson. One other comment on Director Severson's presentation tonight on Slide five. She mentioned reducing the H C area along Park Street, reclassifying blocks between Geyser and J Street as L M U. And I know a hundred years ago, we had a J Street here. I don't know if that'll go into the into the zoning as parameters for that L M U unit, but it could be confusing because what was J Street at the time is now K Street. So if that's incorporated into the zoning, it could be a little bit confusing. Anyway, congratulations on a fine update to our zoning code. And thank you very much for everything you've done.
Thank you, Jack. Get Layan back.
She's here.
Layan, feel free to come off mute. No, she's up. But we cannot hear you. Any other public comment online? Raise your hand or come up.
Layan has got a green thing around. Oh. She had a green box for a minute.
Layan? Hello?
Staff just reminded that she could call in. I think there's a, is the number on the agenda that people?
Yeah.
So I, I can dig up the phone number, right?
You won't tell them what they're doing? Is she still there? Yeah, she's here.
Now, Layan, we're trying to get a phone number for you to call in if you so desire.
So, a good phone number to call would be six six nine four 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 nine one seven one. And then there is, you know what, they can't see that. I'll just.
Oh, yeah.
I will. Share all of the good stuff here. So, for those having technical difficulties, a good phone number, six six nine four 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 nine one seven one. And then the meeting ID and passcode are shown here. Meeting ID eight five four four six eight nine five five one five. And passcode would be zero nine seven three three five.
Can we give it just a minute or two?
Yeah, absolutely. Anybody else online have public comment? Feel free to come off mute. Raise your hand.
We have heard, not to worry, the Layan Kennedy is unable to connect, but has said no worries.
Okay.
Chat featured here.
Thanks, Layan. Sorry. Okay, no more. Nobody else online? We'll go back in the room one more time for public comment. Saying non-public comments closed. Commissioners. Would like to.
Do we want to, there were two, there was just a, really just one.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. We did have questions, so Michael.
Do you need help remembering?
Yeah, yeah. I was looking at the people.
Do you need help?
You know, I had some questions from Jeanette Blank related to the map amendment process and availability of the maps. And so I would say, in the city of Livingston, zoning ordinances affecting Chapter thirty require fifteen days between readings of the ordinance. And so, to the extent that the city commission approves the first reading of the ordinance tonight, we expect, the staff expects that the second reading of this ordinance would occur at the first meeting in December, which is scheduled for December second. And if that reading goes as planned, we would likely schedule the resolution, actually, that door needs to remain open now. We would schedule that resolution for the second meeting in December, which would be December sixteenth, would take effect immediately, and the other the zoning text amendment would take effect on January first. So we would have about two weeks of incongruence. Unfortunately, our local state legislator just left the room. Would have been great for him to hear that. So, yeah, that's, that is that process.
And then I think it was about the resolution on the map, too.
Yeah, and so that's, that is the timing of that resolution process. The map will be made available as part of that process, again, which we expect to have happen on December sixteenth. I didn't hear any other questions, but I would agree with you, Ms. Mar. The state legislature has really done some insane things and would have been nice if our local person was here to hear that.
Perhaps it was a rhetorical question, but I think, I think there's actually some, I think that there's like an important process that the public doesn't normally see, and that's the conversation, and the commission for that matter. But I'm aware that it happens where the development community or developers actually meet with staff when they're proposing an idea, they're coming up with an idea for the community. And I was wondering if you could offer some insight to what those conversations look like? Because while the code, state law requires something, many developers want to do right by the community or they want to make their developments appealing to the people who live here, right? So, so it feels like hopeless, I think, sometimes for people when they see what the state's doing and what we, like, our laws are what they are and what they have to be. But also there's actual conversations that happen. Is that something that you could, like, shed some light on for folks?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So I would point out that state law and the local zoning code provide really the bare minimum standard required for development. And so, as Vice Chair Nudes pointed out, myself, other staff members frequently meet with applicants before they submit an application, really to ensure that the project that they are bringing forward meets the intent of the growth policy and any of our other guiding documents. And so, and also, people that build buildings recognize that they need to rent and/or sell the units in those buildings. And so, things like creating a unit without a parking space lower the economic return, generally speaking of projects, because while they reduce the cost, they also reduce the the revenue or the income associated with that unit. And so, we find in many instances, and not just in the city of Livingston nationwide, a lot of applicants, developers are very reluctant to create residential units that don't have an attached parking space. And so, while state code has set the minimum of a half of a parking space for multifamily units, in practicality or reality, we don't necessarily see that actually come to fruition very often. It's not to say it cannot happen, but again, the state legislature has set that minimum bar there. But, you know, as the vice chair pointed out, the city staff meets with applicants on a regular basis to try to encourage them to meet the goals of the community as expressed through the growth policy and the documents, so.
And I just would like add to that, I guess, to say, when we've seen different things come before us, because sometimes we get the same applicants coming before us with different projects, the public turns out and says things, or the commission reflects what the public says. And it, just in my time on the commission, I've seen, I've seen the development community respond, you know, through what they offer us based on what the feedback they got from the people that live here. So, some of the planned unit developments that have come before us are a great example of how it seems like they're trying to shape things, shape the opportunities or developments in a way that matches what the community is telling local government, whether it's us or staff or, but it's often coming out in meetings through the commission. Hopefully that's helped. I mean, I don't want people to feel hopeless in a world that feels kind of hopeless right now with the way the state comes down on cities, but all is not lost.
I just have a daughter who lives in Seattle, and you should see what they're doing. They are not doing any parking at all. It needs huge developments. So, seemingly possible.
I think that was the only other question, which is kind of rhetorical, but I think it's good to, like, for folks to know it's bigger than just state law.
Yeah. I think that satisfies the question.
Yeah, I saw a phone number come on and then back off, so I'm kind of wondering if it was Elaine. I just like, I want to make sure we don't miss her, because it was after.
I saw that.
Did she offer another, or maybe?
Commissioner Willock, you're in.
I was gonna say, maybe he'll send us.
Tell you what's not working.
I don't see any emails or anything, so. Okay.
Very well. Deliberations.
Do you want to say, is it close, very close to, yeah, okay.
Yeah, close, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can.
Who would like to?
Do you want me to go first?
Sure. You warmed up.
I guess, first I want to say thanks to Land Use Board and staff. On the break, Director Severson confirmed that she thinks comments were actually over sixteen hundred now, perhaps, on the zoning code?
Yeah, it was, it was actually like fifteen twenty-two just from the surveys before we started going through adoption. So with, with everything else, I think it's probably pretty close to sixty.
So close to sixteen hundred. So I just feel, I just feel sort of overwhelmed by that number because this matches the growth policy, which was like my greatest hope is that when it came time to the zoning code update, people would turn out. Since it's, it's a significant part of the growth policy update, or excuse me, growth policy implementation. And this process, I just am really also feeling thankful that this process was so much better than the growth policy. Just to remind folks that the growth policy came all the way up to the commission before we sent it back to the planning board to go through several months' review, I think. And it was a huge lift, so I just, I really appreciate that this process happened before it got to the commission. It looks like it was equally engaging. I really liked the use of focus groups. That was something that we didn't do during the growth policy, but I think it's a good use of focus groups for something like this, this kind of policy. So thank you to all the folks that participated on the focus groups through public comment and also especially staff. Sounds like big thanks to Director Severson and Director Woodhall. So thank you. And the city manager also had an important role to play. So, in terms of like the R two, I think that was a good question Commissioner Lyons asked. I was thinking about that and thinking about how when we first made the land use maps during the growth policy process, it was before some of these changes happened at the state level.
Was that R two or R three?
Yeah, it was R three. Thank you. He was asking about R three, the high-density zoning. And so when we had initially made the future land use maps, R three and R two were very different than what they are today because of the changes at the state level. Some of the changes at the state level really densified R two, and I would be curious how those numbers compare. I'm guessing it puts R two closer to what R two now, closer to what R three used to be. I don't know. Maybe there's some differences, some significant differences. I just like, I feel like R two is way denser than what it was when we first when we first were looking at land use maps and before the state started changing local code. So that comes into play for me when we're So that comes into play for me when we're comparing the growth policy and today and then. Um the ag zone I would address. I'm curious what other commissioners think. I'm wary of a zone that is a single use zone. Um to me, it's like the equivalent of having. Uh just like a single uh zone for only one use seems like um we could end up with a lot of little zones. That were just singling out si- different types of single land uses as opposed to like multiple ways to use the land. And if our goal was to simplify um policy and clarify between the zones, like I'm. I'm curious how ag fits into that because it seems like a very specific one use zone. And also the R one doesn't preclude ag use. So we're not, there's nothing in the proposed zoning that's saying no to agriculture. But adding ag is like just, I don't know, I'm curious what people think, it what other commissioners think. It seems like it's contrary to what some of our goals were. When we were putting together um some of the changes that we wanted or the intentions of the changes. And. I think another commissioner was asking about the LMU zone, which would be around. The CBD area. I think that that is an interesting conversation to have together. My initial thoughts are that it really. Does create more of a transition to the R two neighborhoods if we do have an LMU. And I'm going back to some of the conversations about the um special use permit or the conditional use of the Shane Center. Um and some of the conversations that were happening in that neighborhood around um compatible uses. And wondering if the LMU doesn't get at at some of the concerns we had when um. That particular property was being developed in a way that maybe was um. I guess like it brought up community concerns. So I'm not, I don't, I don't feel like. I I think I see the balance between why the LMU would exist um. In terms of like balancing community character with the high density development, because that is an important part of the growth policy. And Phil was really important, but community character, I think, was really important. And I think that. Quite a few of these um recommendations actually get at community character in a really policy driven way. I also like that staff um heard us when we were talking about wanting more sort of elegance or. I don't, I I think it is like an elegant solution to wanting to differentiate some of these zones that were very similar before um. And addressing some of the constraints or the, I guess, the lane that the state put us in. Um it seems like sort of a creative um way to address community character when we're losing control locally to the state. Particularly with like the highway commercial, I like the um like what we have is highway commercial now going to LMU. I like that there's a reduction of um what did it say in the staff report? It was um. Car services discouraged, so like not having drive-throughs there and making it more pedestrian friendly. I like some of those things that it's really like. It's incorporating some of our intentions and goals with the active transportation goals we have in our community through um zoning. Which I don't know that we were doing that. I mean, we were doing it to some extent before, but I think this is an improvement, some of these zones, just like tweaking what cer- what things can be happening on certain lands. Um. Oh, I guess the only thing I haven't mentioned is the riparian. Um I think I can't, I can only think of rush. Talking about water is like one of the top two contentious issues in the state of Montana. So I think we have people coming in really strongly wanting us to put in lots of regulations around riparian areas and we have. Lots of people coming in strongly that they want um. You know, talking about takings, which. I'm not an attorney, I'm not gonna go there, but I think that's a bold, that's a bold place to always go is to go into the takings. Um conversations um. What it tells me as a commissioner is we probably just need to have some more conversations and maybe get more data that's specific to Livingston to um. To help us understand like what makes sense for our community and like how does it affect landowners that currently have built outland versus. Undeveloped lands because we haven't had that conversation and I think that there's a difference between, you know, folks that already have houses built. Um versus land that's undeveloped in a riparian area. And so I think there's probably more conversation to have. One thing I didn't hear, which is surprising, is nobody brought up, nobody came forward in public comment to bring up short term rentals. And that has been a super contentious issue. So that tells me there were a lot of good conversations that happened before it ever came to us. Um so the riparian is a little yellow flag for me that we need to have more conversations about riparian. Seems like staff did a great job with consultants on short term rentals because it seems like some of those big issues got ironed out before it made it to us. Appreciate Commissioner Lyons questions about light industrial. Also appreciate Mr. Gagers. I think he's probably seen this firsthand, working in local government. How, yeah, like how short terminals can um. Take over places like a light industrial and I think we've talked about the diver- diversifying the economy on the commission and. And so I just, I think there's some really good balance in here. It might not be perfect, um but that's sort of where I'm at right now. Thanks for, thanks for coming to the Melissa Show. I'm done.
Thanks. Commissioner Nudes, would you like to go next? No particular order.
Folks are all kidding me.
Commissioner Lyons, you have the floor.
I I'm gonna start by saying there's uh a lot to like um in in the new post regulation. Um I it uh it like clearly represents a huge effort from staff, the land use board um and our community and really. Appreciate that and that's, you know, the a reflection of what's amazing about Livingston and that, you know, is what brought me to the table here today. So I really appreciate it. Um and I know that so much work has happened to bring this in front of us. So that's the first thing I'm gonna say. Um. On the R three discussion, um I think that the idea of incorporating. Um some commercial uses by right into uh into um. Uh otherwise dense residential areas is a smart thing. Um mixed use. Uh in in land use and transportation, there's five D variables. One of them is diversity. Um and that's, that's when we say diversity, we mean a mix of of land uses. If you have higher levels of. Land use diversity, that leads to internal capture, which is trips originating and starting in the same place. Um and really what it does is it reduces the impact of density um on that area and its surroundings by kind of. Facilitating everyone, somebody's daily needs within uh a given space. So mixed use, good. Uh and and moving R three to to mixed use is a good thing. Um on the ag zone discussion, which is not in here. If I'm if I'm understanding correctly, like we're not voting on tax zone today, right?
We could.
Yeah, we could amend it. We just don't have anything there.
Uh we we did not fully incorporate. So like if we if we just said we accept this resolution or this ordinance, there's no axon.
Correct.
Okay, um just wanted to clarify that uh. I I I really appreciate the land use board bringing that up and I and it reflects um I think uh an appreciation and reverence for the initial. Um uh growth policy that I think i- if I remember correctly, we we talked for a long time. We finally came up with um we called in the future landing map, we called it open and pastoral, something like that. Um and we called it that because that's, that was our vision for those areas on the future landing map was open and pastoral. Um Vice Chair Nudes uh talked about um the possibility of. Uh stipulating a single use. Uh I think that's, you know, I think that's generally an interesting. Um concept of like, you know, that goes against a a lot of the other uh elements that we're. Advocating for in the growth policy and I I would agree. Um the vision, however, for those areas on the future land use map was open and pastoral. And so I think that. Uh a designation of R one would certainly not uh accomplish an open and pastoral environment. Um you know, I I can't on the back of a napkin um estimate how many. Um single family bots could fit into those massive parcels, but it's. It's probably on the order of magnitude of some of those estimates we've heard um from Brenza Park County. Uh if not more, those are huge, huge tracts of land. Um and so I think that I I think that an ag zone and and I don't, I actually don't think we're gonna be able to come up with what that looks like tonight. But I think that that, I think doing something like an ag zone would um. Would help to maintain the spirit of that that land use, that future land use map that we talked about. Um short term rentals. Uh I think the reason why nobody has uh made comments on short term rentals. Is that we can say that we're regulating short term rentals. However, we haven't excluded short term rentals from anywhere that allows residential except for this light industrial. So we're saying we we can say that we we regulated short term rentals, except short term rentals are allowed anywhere that you have a house. So. Like it's to me, it's um I I don't know, it's kind of a cop out in my opinion.
Hmm.
Um but it like, I guess it, I guess you can say that it creates a framework for regulating short term rentals. But we're we're saying that short term rentals can be allowed anywhere that um that uh residential uses are allowed. That's not a policy decision. Uh maybe, maybe we're making a framework, but that is not a policy decision. I find it to be inadequate and somewhat embarrassing. Um so I I don't, I I don't like what we've done there. Um and I think that it's, I I mean, I think we should either not have it in the code or do something about it, but I think like. Putting it in the code and not doing anything about it is um, uh like I said, I think it's a cop out.
Yeah, from just from the land use board, um it kind of was a pump.
Yeah.
Back to the commission just because.
Hmm.
Um, yeah, it's contentious and it.
Did people come to the meeting talking about it to land use board?
Mm-hmm.
The public?
Yeah.
No, they're not here.
I mean, I I honestly think that if the goal is to like appease contention, that's exactly what we've done.
Yeah.
Um we can say that we've regulated uh short term rentals and they're allowed anywhere that residential. And that that's a a minor stretch, but Mr. Gager uh explained why uh they weren't allowed in light industrial. But I'm for 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 the purposes of my argument, I'm gonna um continue putting it that way. Um so I'll just kind of leave it there. We haven't made a policy decision on on short term rentals. I'm disappointed in that. Um. Going back to a question I had earlier about the R two, the incorporation of um. Of neighborhood serving retail or office uses in R two. I I I love that concept. Um however, having a zoning administrator decide. If something has little or no impact on traffic on the surrounding neighborhood, I think really needs to be addressed. Um. If it's a residential neighborhood, residential uses and and in R two, let's say maximum, there's like four or five residential units in R two. Um that that will produce from the from the uh IT strip and parking generation manual, that'll produce somewhere around like. Ten trips a day. Because if you think about it, like one of the family members is driving to work. In the morning and driving back and then maybe another family member is making a few trips during the day. If if it's a retail use, if you think about the trip generation of a retail use, it's many trips all day long. So there is no way to construe incorporating retail in an R two neighborhood. In a way that has little to no impact on traffic. And so if we're setting that as the threshold for. Incorporating neighborhood serving retail, we might as well say, we might as well not have that in there because we we will not be able to. If that's the threshold, especially if it's as ambiguous as that, um will not be able to um incorporate. Neighborhood serving retail. So I think that's something we need to to address tonight. Um. I would suggest either striking that um or putting some s- sort sort of hard figure. Although I think that hard figure should come from a look at the IT trip and parking generation manual, which um I left in my office. Um. Okay, now, this is my, uh I'm gonna get to my main point. Um believe it or not, I haven't gotten to the main point. What I think has happened here is we have state regulations that have increased. Allowable residential density in in our residential neighborhoods. Um. So what we've done in response is to decrease density.
Mm-hmm.
In our urban core. I think that's a bad response to that state, to that state policy change. Um and I think it is really contrary to the vision of the growth policy. So again, I what what I see this this code now doing is is flattening density throughout Livingston.
Mm-hmm.
So really, there's not a huge amount of difference between what you can do in R two to what you can do in the CBD. So basically, we're saying anywhere within the 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 city limits of Livingston. We have a somewhat equal perspective on on density. I I think that that is a bad um zoning code. Um you know, we think about, I don't, I I don't need to get into that lecture, but um.
Get into it.
No, I'm gonna skip that one, but uh basically we're we're reducing potential density downtown. Um we've already been forced to increase density at the periphery, but what that tells the development community is. Don't worry about where you're looking to to add increased density. You can do it wherever. Because there's not much benefit to doing it downtown as opposed to in the uh R two districts on the outskirts. Um there there was a comment earlier about um. Like the, oh, like talking about the the light mixed use at the edge of the current kind of high intensity downtown. That right now is is designated as CBD.
Mm-hmm.
And it was, it was basically, that is currently a residential neighborhood. And so in order to preserve the character of that residential neighborhood. We're gonna downzone it. That's not what what zoning and planning is about. It's not about looking at what e- exists there and classifying it. It's about. Allowing the market the space to manifest a vision, a a planned vision. Um so again, I think that reducing densities downtown, reducing the extent of the CBD. Uh is a bad idea. Um as I, as I tend to do, I'm gonna support that claim with a couple of references in the planning literature. Um Bertrand and Brucker in the Journal of Regional Science and Urban Economics. So that height restricting, height restrictions contribute to sprawl and commuting and higher commuting costs with a negative measurable measurable impact. On consumer welfare. Um with a similar finding in the journal land use policy. Um a a study found that height restrictions in urban cores lead to land price geek, a a land price decrease of of up to sixty percent. And housing output decrease of seventy percent. Um I'm gonna quote something from from uh that paper. It says to accommodate for less housing output, the city edge has to expand, causing urban sprawl. So if you think about. The potential for growth in Livingston, if we cut down the potential for growth in the core. If we're cutting it down, wh- where does it go? It doesn't go away. It goes out. If let's just say there's a need, there's a market need for a thousand housing units. And we have, I mean, actually, as it a- as it stands today, we have infinite capacity in in the CBD for those thousand housing units. And we have limited capacity for it in the outskirts. If we cut down that capacity in the CBD, it spills outward. And that is the antithesis of the vision of the growth policy. Um and so I I see like. Um, and so I I see like a lot of cutting down in the core and accommodation outwards. Um, and I, and I take issue with that. I've been going for a minute. Uh, I'll give my fellow commissioners a chance to chime in.
Thank you. Commissioner Lyons?
A lot to think about.
Does that mean you're going next, Commissioner?
It does not mean that I'm going next. Chair Schwartz, it means I gotta do some brain thinking on this, because.
Okay, um, let's see. Where shall I start? I I I also have concerns about the shrinking of the CBD. And I, I agree with Commissioner Lyons and that that zone is a vision for the future. Um, obviously knowing that there are neighborhoods there now. And so you know, the market will make those decisions if if we're gonna grow out. I do hate to stifle the 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 economic ability of of the downtown area. What I do appreciate, so, but I I also want to say, I really do appreciate, because I feel like the thought process potentially in the zoning around the downtown area was to kind of create a step down effect so that you know, people living on the one side of the street and then on the other side of the street are, you know, I've got my little house and now there's a a giant house behind, or a giant apartment behind me and how is that gonna affect me? So I do appreciate, because I do think that that thought process was to create a step down effect moving out of downtown. And I do like that idea, but I wonder if, and I know we're not necessarily talking about the map tonight, but as we discuss that map, you know, for me, I'd I'd love to see the the CBD sort of stay the size that it is and then maybe look at stepping down from there. I'm just looking at like building feet and I'm not looking at exactly all the allowances, but the high density residential would step down to fifty and fifty feet and then could we step down from there, moving out to the light mixed use, which would be thirty six feet. So you would get that step down effect, but maybe just not as much and that we're not losing so much of the ability to have that density. Because we all know that the big, I feel like the biggest thing that came out of the growth policy that we've heard from everyone was the fear of sprawl. And if people can't, if we can't get some density in places around town, we're gonna see sprawl. We also know that in general, areas in the hearts of towns that have the ability to grow up, um, that's, you're you're, you've got a bigger tax base there. The further you get outside of town, you're not, there's, you know, the city's paying a whole lot to provide services for those people and they're not we're not collecting the taxes to do that. But we do need height restrictions and the idea, it's a little frightening to think that we not had any height restrictions at this point and boy, are we lucky that we haven't gotten anything wacky so far. And I know, you know, we hear from our constituents all the time that they really they live here because of the character of the town. And I do think that it is our responsibility to protect that as well. So, you know, is there a balance that we can strike? Because I hate to lose the density that we can have. Um, so I I would like to chat about that further and look at how we can how we can do that, because that's kind of, that's a really big downzone from there. Um, so I would, I would appreciate those discussions. Sorry, I have little tags everywhere. I'm just gonna kind of keep moving and blabbing.
I'm gonna bring this one up later.
Okay, great. I do want to talk about the riparian zones and also we're, we we've removed out of um, the environmental protection sensitive areas um section. Really any conversation about wildlife, wildlife habit habitat and migration corridors. Um, that's concerning to me. I feel like we need to be looking at that, particularly in the corridors around the river. And so, you know, if we're not gonna do anything about riparian setbacks now and we're gonna, and the city decides they want to do a study, we need to be looking at the wildlife habitat migration corridors. I mean, if people aren't aware, we had a grizzly bear come through Livingston about a week ago. Sounds like he did pretty good, didn't get in too much trouble. Um, I hope he made it to the crazy mountains because that was the direction that he was headed. And I think that we need to be prepared for that. We also know that we have moose in those areas and and black bears all over and so I think removing, looking at wildlife habitat migration corridors within our zoning code and when people are building is a mistake. So I I hate to see that go and I would like to see that incorporated back in. Or at least as I know, I'm only gonna be on this commission for two more months, so if we're not doing it now, that needs to be brought back up in a study about riparian zones, because those animals are a big part of our community as well and we need to take care of them. We need to keep we need to work towards coexistence. We can all live here. I think we all, a lot of us choose to live here because of the animals that we have in this area, so we need to work together to coexist with one another. So that, that was another. On my list. Sorry, boss. When it comes to the Ag, um, the Ag District, I agree with Commissioner Lyons. I think that, I know Jen had started a sort of a draft preliminary agricultural district. Um, maybe tonight we ask her to continue to flush that out further for consideration. And our next, next look at this, I would say that an R one district is not is not the same as open and pastoral and quite frankly, probably is gonna cut that property up so badly that if we thought that that was gonna be any sort of a corridor, we've screwed it up. So I would, I would consider an Ag District if, if we, you know, wanted to flush out more of that draft. Because I don't think an R one district is even similar. And anyway. And obviously, uh, my other thought and 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 that as well is that those property owners could ask for unconditional use permit for anything else they wanted to do in that area. Um, if we opted to do something like that. So I think that that can be an option. Nobody's brought up tonight and I've seen it, I I saw in a few of our um comments from folks about manufactured homes and whether they should have to be on a foundation or not. Um, I know that there were comments from Neighbor Works Montana and from HR DC. Having lived in a trailer myself for several years off and on and in different places, it may be that we should look at providing areas for mobile home parks to have spaces that they don't have to put a home on a foundation. Probably shouldn't be very close to the river. My thought, but it might be something to consider, uh, only because I feel like that that allows people some home affordability that they might not be able to have elsewhere and if they opt to remove it at some point, it would be easier. So I don't know if people think about that and I maybe don't know quite the structure of that, but um, I did appreciate that comment and wondered if that, that was uh, if we could have some further discussion about that. And finally, from a comment from Explorer Livingston, I thought that this, and I'm gonna, I guess I probably should have asked this in clarifying questions because I don't know if this fits in the zoning code. But I do appreciate the comment from Explorer Livingston about building permits and projects that get started and I can especially understand and understand them downtown. Where projects get started and they don't get completed and then we've got empty shelves or boarded up buildings for years on end. So I don't know within the zoning, if this fits in the zoning code or if this needs to go somewhere else, but I think it might, I think it's uh, something that we could, that I like to see us look at because I know that there are other cities that particularly in their downtown areas. If you're doing something like that and you're not completing it, you have to put up a screen or you have to do something else so that you don't have just a blight, yeah, blight in your downtown business district. So wondering if there's something that we might be able to look at with that. And then finally, short term rentals. I agree that if we're not gonna do anything, why are we doing it? But I also wonder, is this, and maybe this is a a set, a question for Mr. Gagers, is does, do we see, see what we're doing now as a first step with short term rentals? To do something else later? Like, is this something we need to put in place now so that if the commission down the road decides to do something more strict, that we need this in place in our zoning code to go to the next step? Does that make sense?
One thing is the fee table, right? That comes later.
But if we wanted, if if a future commission decided that they wanted to put a number, you know, like we're only, we're only gonna allow so many you know, of this kind of a short term rental in town. Is the, are we laying the groundwork for that? Is this something that has to be done before if another commission wanted to take a a further step? Does that question make sense?
Yeah, I I I would offer that um as the Commissioner Lyons pointed out, this what is being created within the zoning code is a framework to regulate short term rentals. That framework uses as a starting point by and large the current status quo with short term rentals. Um, I would offer, I, you know, I I probably you know, maybe it's just one person's reading versus a different persons. Um, I do think section thirty point five seven does introduce some regulation of short term rentals. Um, not only by creating the type one versus the type two short term rentals, but also creating um, requirements for a contact for certainly the the type twos that um have somebody must have a place of business within fifty mile radius of the rental property. Uh, we've subjecting them to some safety inspections that don't exist today. So, you know, I I would categorize this actually as the first step towards regulating short term rentals. We're doing it in a very light touch way that feels pretty similar to what we're doing today, but there are some enhancements in what we're doing today that are proposed here. Um, so, yeah, it's this is the first step towards regulating short term rentals in a more meaningful and impactful way. But I think what we heard through the open house processes and consolidated land use board and quite honestly, the focus groups and others, um, is is that the community is a little bit divided, um, and and not passionately so on either way, on either side. I I think people recognize short term rentals have a long historical use and, you know, standing in the city of Livingston. But they would like to see some sort of regulation and understanding and and we've taken, you know, kind of that first baby step here. And and yeah, if if it's the the will of the commission, because this is something that we discussed internally um, at at length and with the focus groups, you know, should we differentiate the allowance of of short term rental type one versus type two? You know, and and the the, I guess, the analogy that I've used internally are bed and breakfasts. Um, you know, we we don't allow bed and breakfast quite honestly in all residential zones currently today. A short term rental, certainly a type one, a hosted short term rental feels pretty similar to a bed and breakfast, right? And so perhaps it is the will of the commission to restrict those short term rentals in the the low density or medium density residential uh, and and push those and and certainly maybe those unhosted ones, um, those type twos, get those out of the the residential. That's, that's kind of the conversation that I think including um, short term rentals in the use table opens up. Again, we've used kind of the current, the current situation as our starting point, but if it pleases the commission to you know, pull short term rentals out of R one, R two, we're, we're happy to work with you on that.
Can I ask a follow up, please? So so you did get some feedback that sort of, like, from all parties, because like I said, I'm surprised people aren't here talking about this, but it seems like you got to a place maybe from comments that there were, were these sort of like two types of short term rentals that the community wanted identified. Whether it's type one being like the owner lives on property, so we assume they're like a Livingston resident versus like these folks from somewhere else that buy properties and then rent them out. Right? I mean, that's essentially, so we're, I mean, I'm oversimplifying, but like, that's sort of why there's these two categories with the idea of like, like, is that kind of what the consensus was before it came to us?
Um, I, you know, I I I probably would leave location of the owner out of it. It really comes down to more, is there somebody on?
On property, okay. Thank you for clarifying that, okay. Which, which gets to the point of if there's a party next door, is the owner on site? Or is it just like crazy party town in my little quiet neighborhood? Okay. And then so you're saying we can have a conversation about locations still, but that wasn't fully teased out, except for you're bringing this light industrial to us for the reasons already stated. And then the fee schedule would be the next thing that happens at some point when that's updated. These are currently not on there, so. Okay, so that would be like another sort of policy regulation tool would be. Okay, thank you.
No, I think it was good. I mean, I was hoping to have just that same conversation.
Oh, yeah. Can we ask too, like, what does the state say? Like, the state, right?
Yes.
The state, like they get into ADU land, but do they say anything about short term rentals?
Um, the the state classifies uh, short term rentals as a residential use, but that's really actually for like tax purposes. And it's actually has nothing to do with the zoning and the Montana land use and.
Well, and if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, for us really to do anything about a short term rental at any point, we need to codify it. That might be the wrong word in the zoning code, right? So that we're saying this is a short term rental. This is where we're allowing, where we're allowing it. But then that gives us the opportunity to regulate, but if it's not in, if the short term rentals are not in the code, talked about in the code, zoning code, we can't do anything about it.
Like a multiple step thing.
It it certainly, it becomes much more difficult if the zoning code is totally silent because then when it comes down to questions of interpretation of allowed uses, one really starts to have to look at, you know, the zoning administrator has to look at, um, you know, what the most similar allowed use is, right? And so, yes, by by introducing them into the zoning code, we now have the ability to address them.
Thank you. And then at some point, Commissioner Lyons, as we move forward with the continued discussion, I would like to hear from you as we look at, you know, sort of the that downtown area that that I brought up and you brought up. Do you see? Would you trying to, I'm sorry, I'm trying to think about the best way to say this. When you look, when you look at, if you wanted to make changes to this, because like you said, you're not, you're feeling like When you look, when you look at, if you wanted to make changes to this, because like you said, you're not, you're feeling like you're losing the ability to have density. How would you fix that? Would it be? What's like, what's allowed in in each of the categories or would, or is it more? You change than the map, like you put a diff, you'd swap out the category, does that make sense? So I would like, we don't have to, but at some point, that's, I would like to hear that from you, but I'll, I'll pause there.
Okay, um, yeah.
Could we finish the first round, then take a break and then do another round?
Yeah, why don't we just?
Look, you and James gotta go.
Well, we can take a break, come back.
He looked eager.
I mean, I can get mine done in about two minutes. I mean, I'm gonna heck off pretty much what.
Finish your first.
Yeah, CBD, basically, I believe what they're taking out is what's residential now, but I understand, you know. You know, taking that out from the potential of um. Being developed and keeping that in that corridor down there. I can understand keeping that, the CBD the way it is. But I do like the stepping down of the heights, especially, um, especially along Park Street. Um, the view shed and stuff like that, because the one thing I'm more concerned about. You know, than anything is, you know, the character and the look of the town and the view shed and stuff. And why did we move here, you know? Um, and I understand, um, we've, we want to limit sprawl and that's. You know, the reason why we, you know, we've done the ADUs and they're, you know, working on, you know, the PUDs and stuff like that, so. Yeah, Ag Zone, going to Ag Zone, um, I kind of agree with Randy on that. Five million, you know, five acre minimum, I think it's too small as well, if we're gonna have an ag zone.
Like the forty acre minimum?
Yeah, or what, you know. How many forty acre parcels are there left into, you know, city limits? I don't know, or, you know, I, that 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 escapes me, I don't know. Yeah, see, I told you it was gonna be pretty quick, guys, and cut down all that.
Well, James.
Okay, I got a whole bunch of things, no joke. Yeah, I'm gonna shoot things that are uh, jumped out at me. Because I am not a planning professional as Dr. Lyons. So decreasing the size of the CBD, um. I have to agree with Commissioner Lyons, the demand doesn't actually go away by. Decreasing the footprint, you, and and that is. What we wanted with the growth policy was to grow the center out, smart growth, I believe is what we're calling that. So I get the stepping down, but if that's going to be our. Economic and social center, then that's where we should be focusing our developments. And so, um, I'm I'm not in love with necessarily making this, the the CBD disappear. Or not disappear, excuse me, but decrease the size. The height restrictions, as far as they go down Park Street, I'm fine with. I think that's probably a pretty good idea. We can all see the mountains as we drive down Park Street. I think it's, I think that's a a good plan. You can build plenty of. Um, I think it was sixty feet was what we were looking at for down Park Street, or was it forty feet? That one, uh. That one kind of depends because of things. I'm not in love that quite so much, but there's, you know, things that we can do with that. I'm going to speak towards the red parion. Health, safety and wellbeing, health, safety and wellbeing. Fleschman Creek has flooded repeatedly. And I invite anyone to drive up Fleschman Creek outside of city limits and go take a look at how many. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of cubic feet of water are being stored, even right now, behind Beaver Dams. And so when we have an event and we have a huge amount of water. And it doesn't take much to plug a culvert like over on Park Street or any number of other culverts. That has an impact along the entire downtown, everywhere. So. To do nothing at all is irresponsible to the residents of the city of Livingston. I'm not saying that we need to put a hundred foot setbacks on everything, because we do have unique properties. We have properties that are vibrated by both Gilman and by Fleschman Creek. So we're going to have to have a patchwork, I think, of some sort of codes, but we should have. It should be an entertaining conversation that we will have with a lot of homeowners and property owners. And be able to, I think, find a solution. For those, there there's two of them. It's not a hundred and fifty of these things, there's two creeks. And one of them is the, is really the big one, which is Fleschman Creek. We should be able to come to a solution that. Maybe not everybody gets exactly everything they want, but we all have a, you know, the this responsibility to the greater, the city as a whole. So, um, those are kind of the things that struck me. Also, I had no idea it was forty four years since the last time we had a zone. And that code update, so, uh, this is a, an immense amount of work cleaning up. What really is a patchwork. So, um, my hats off to Mr. Gauger and staff, Jen, that, um. This is a very digestible topic, even though it is a huge amount of information to read through. And so I applaud you guys. Thank you very much. And with that, yield and maybe make a motion for president, right?
I'll second that motion.
All favor. We'll turn at, um, nine fifteen.
God's born in nineteen eighty one. And record it.
Okay, this meeting in Livingston City Commission is called back to order.
Uh, can, can Chair, Chair?
Vice Chair, Vice Chair Newt.
Chair, what's your name?
I know, I do that, gotta look, oh, yeah, Lyons.
Can I propose a process?
That would be, you know, really cool.
Awesome, I love process.
I know you love processes, and I think that if we're gonna get through this, um.
Thank you for the opportunity, um, to bring some.
In order, lead.
Okay, I.
Fashion.
I kind of make a li- made a list of commissioners talking.
Thank you.
Um, can we, we maybe, so, yeah, cool. Can we go through them like one at a time instead of doing a big mind spill? And then that way we can like make decisions together, just.
Yeah, no, I like that. That's kind of what I was doing too, that's kind of.
You want me to?
Yeah, you know, you got better notes than me.
Okay, the first one was this, the conversation around an ag zone. Um, including. Oh, yeah, okay.
No, I, I love where you're going. I did something similar in my head, but a little bit broader. Like I categorized our, our, the things that we're focused on. So I'm, if you don't mind, I'm gonna offer the categories and then, and then you can tell me if that like works with what yours is.
Yeah.
That okay? I'm not trying to insert.
This is like the dream consensus. Situation happening for me right now.
So, a a topic was.
Height, yeah.
Yeah. And there are lots of different ways in which we talked about heads, but the topic was heights and that, do you think that's one of like the most unresolved?
Okay.
So far.
Do you want to give all your topics or do you just want to do it one at a time?
So, so I had heights, uses and lot size. Those, like, everything that I've been thinking about, maybe save for a few things, but I think that that's like. The three categories that in that, I think, like, direct our conversation. But after I put that forward, please.
No.
So then, um, would you put ag under uses?
Yes.
Okay.
Also, also lot size.
Okay. So.
So what? Oh, okay.
So we're talking about the ag zone, generally called the ag zone. Um, Commissioner Lyons, do you care if I go first? Pouring out of my mouth. Um, I like what you were saying about the future land use map and the growth policy conversations and the vision of open and pastoral. Um, I just don't think calling something an ag zone is the same as open and pastoral. So I think like the prescriptiveness of an ag zone is a really like one use. Zone that could preclude other things that people might want to do on a very large landscape, that's not ag. I don't know what that is, but I imagine it exists somewhere. And so I guess I make, if we're gonna go the direction of adding a zone, I guess I would make it. Matching the intent of our other zones in that it's not super narrow, but it's like, we change the name. And we go for the vision, not just the prescription of ag.
That, that was one of the dilemmas with land use board, you know, you know, just going back to. The growth policy of open and pastoral, you know, how does that fit? So we, yeah.
What if we just call it ultra low R one, I make it forty eight to lots.
Or what if we, because we can also direct staff to bring us back something, so if we have like some. If we had, I I don't know, I'm just like asking if we like had some like big goals that we wanted with this zone. Like some, you know, like the vision part, and then their job is to bring us back something that fits, that's, I don't know.
I have some thoughts on that. Are are we, are we workshopping?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So the, 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 the regional example, the regional analog that comes to mind, um, is the Bridger Canyon zoning district.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, beautiful area, um, and lot, like, in a lot of ways. For like what the community was looking for, you can call it a success. The one way that you can't really call it a success is from an equity standpoint. Um, when you, when you set minimum lot sizes of of forty acres or whatever. You're gonna have like a land use pattern that kind of produces what we're looking for. But it, it does produce some equity concerns. Um, I don't have like an obvious answer to that. But maybe if if what we're doing is sending this to staff to do some research, like, consider. Equity, like, wh- what are some ways that that equity, equity can be considered in this, if at all? I don't, I I like.
What is the Bridger Canyon zoning district? I don't know what that is.
It's, uh, it's a Galton County zoning district, it's Bridger Canyon.
And a lot of it came to, um, fruition because of potential oil and gas.
Gas, yeah.
Speculation, because I was working on a number of places through that, during that.
Um, so like if you, if you drive to Bridger Bowl from, from Bozeman or from Livingston, um, like that. Those big lots with fancy houses, that's really pretty. That's, that's the, that zoning district. And that's, and that is really what the market would probably do with that kind of, um, with that kind of zoning classification. So if if that's what we want to make, th- there's a, there's a, there's an example of how to do it. And like really, my only critique of that is it's, it doesn't provide like housing for, for folks. Uh, on, who aren't multi- multimillionaires, billionaires.
But if you wanna limit the sprawl, you know.
No, no, so like, from a, from a land use and from like a, from an environmental standpoint, it is, it is completely had the intended effect. And and there's a lot to lot about that. And it's just like, who can use that, that land? Like, who enjoys it? That's the, that's the equity question.
And if I, if I may kind of on that, I, I think the Bridger Canyon zoning district is a citizen initiated zoning district, so. Am I right?
Yeah, yeah, I think it was.
Yeah, I think it was a C A Z, it's a C A Z D, so just, but there's information there, right? Like that, that you could pluck from that. And I, and I do think that Jen was on the right path with some of the things. In her agricultural zoning district that she brought up, speaking about like, I mean, it's not. You know, it, it's not, maybe it, maybe it's not, you won't see this equitable, but I mean, she mentioned like the ability for. If it was true ag, the ability to put some. Um, staff housing, you know, like a bunkhouse or something, so that you could have some housing on there for folks if you were doing a true, like, true agricultural work. Or if you were growing something and then, I, I do like this idea of like. So this artisan manufacturing and, you know, that sort of thing, but on these bigger lots that has some regulation around it. Um, so I, I would hate to lose that and I would, I would also say it would be nice to. You know, she's, she got started here with number of livestock or whatever that would be. Um, this is the very last page of the packet, it's seventy nine. And then she also mentioned it in her presentation, um. But, you know, she's got in here details for permits that, you know, to, to try to think about how many, you know, what livestock. Or how much would be allowed per acre, um, and that sort of thing. So I think that that would be important too. Um, but she does have some, you know, allowed uses in here. So I think that, that, that this is on the right track, but I, I agree that. Maybe it doesn't have to be an ag, you know, district, but to do larger lot sizes. Because I think that does get to what you all are trying to do, like, the, the, the community and. You two on the planning board at the time were trying to do with this zone, because a five acre lot is not, in my opinion, like, you're not getting. Anywhere near to open and test world.
The other thing is like, um, the county regulates livestock in the city, right? Through the sanitarium, so I'd be interested if we're going this route, like. What does that actually look like? Because there's, we don't need to have a policy. If a policy already exists in the county that's regulating something in the city, like pens, for example. Um, so I guess like some more information.
Yeah, so maybe.
Would be helpful.
That out for us to, to determine what that is. Um, you know, like what, what the sanitarium would allow per those, that size of a lot, something, but. Um, but I do think that that's sort of getting more at the what. That usually, and I just remember there was in that growth pol- almost growth policy meetings. I felt like this was one whole night of a discussion.
Back then meeting because of these topics.
Yeah, so, um.
Doing it all over again.
Well, but not, and it was fine. And staff has, and, and staff has brought us good information, good useful information and jumping off points that I think. We never saw with. Not, excuse, let me stop that, from the consultant. Matthew at the time did an amazing job running that process.
Yeah.
With all of you, and that was city staff, so I do not want to, but what came from that consultant.
Wasn't our favorite.
Was not workable, so just to say. So I would like to give props where props are due.
Do we need to share anything else, or is that enough?
How are you?
I kind of feel like the A designation, just A agriculture, whatever you want to call it. Is a similar framework, framework for tuning, like the STR conversation.
Okay.
You don't have it, you don't start it with anything.
Yeah.
So. So our goals really, just like, so staff, because they're gonna have to put together, right, a column and uses. So it sounds like our goals really are, um, low intensity, um, open pastoral. Um, not restricted to just ag, but other uses like in the direction that the director was going. And giving us some options with lot sizes, so that we can think about the balance of like. The goal of the policy versus, and like including equity in that goal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm open to it's impossible to do this equitably, but I would love some research looking into. Is, is that definitive? Is it definitive that, that this type of land use outcome is. Is correlated with.
Right.
With, um, you know, uh, hobby farms for, for billionaires.
Yeah, right. Chair, do you want us to keep going? Do we need anything else on this? Or do you feel like you have enough, Mr. Gauger?
I certainly think we have enough.
Okay, so let's keep moving then. Sorry, I'm like just taking a seat.
Thank you.
Um, if we're going through, we're going through uses and lot sizes next, so would the next use be like short term rentals?
Sure, yeah, why not?
Cause we're talking about the use table, right?
It's great.
Okay, so. It sounds like we have a framework for regulating short, regulating short term rentals. Are you okay with me just like doing?
Please.
Someone to get out of here, like do stuff and move on. Um, I don't want to get out of here. I want us to have a good conversation, but it's on, okay. Um, do we want to talk about the use table? Do we want to talk about the use table? Mister Gager brought up that we could certainly have conversations about did we he he offered an idea of like considering, do we wanna like. Restrict them from the residential zones and just keep them more like the more commercial activities occur. I don't know, that's a starting place. Did you?
I I've got a like a policy question for us that might help us answer that. What do we think? The the first question, the opening question is what do we think are the. Negative impacts of of short term rentals? Or do we think that they exist? Like what are the negative impacts that we're trying to avoid? Because if we can define that. Then we can associate which types of land and use classifications. Are best for either facilitating mitigating that um or avoiding it altogether. So like, for example, like are are we worried that short term rentals? Take away housing units. If that's what we're uh housing units for long term rentals, if that's what we're worried about. We would think about restricting them from places that have the potential for the highest density of housing, right? Um so anyway, like what that that's an example of the of the purpose of that reasoning. So the question to to everybody here is. What are the impacts that we're trying to avoid of short term?
One thing I've heard from people, and we're talking just about the negative impacts of short term rentals right now, and I assume we can do like the positive impacts at some other point. So negative impacts that I would hear would be um like community character, right? So folks wanna know their neighbors and they want. They want like consistency in their neighborhood, not like random block parties happening on a weeknight or whatever. Um I I would say that's a thing. I live like in a neighborhood with that's like an older neighborhood with. Oh, I would say that's a thing, like the quality of life. You know, we've heard people talk about. Um short term rentals like impacting their ability to get in and out of their houses, because the way the ADUs are like built now. And so like when you have a short term rental neighbor. Coming in and out, it's different than a long term. Neighbor that knows like where to park their car, so the neighbors can still get out of their driveway in the alley. Like that's something that came up recently. So I think. That community character, but like. Short term rentals. Like impacts that. Is a negative.
And I would say short term rentals can take housing, long term housing off the market. I've certainly heard and seen in some neighborhoods, you know.
It's in our neighborhood.
Like, well, you know, you walk out and if there's a bunch of short term rentals, that whole block is dark, you know, because not, you know, during how when it's not high season. There's not people in those homes and so that plays into that community character. I think that. You certainly run a risk with short term rentals who. So you know, and I appreciate, I actually I do appreciate the the two types, you know, I think that there's. When a home is managed from outside of, you know, like it's an empty home, people rent it online. Yeah, managed from far away.
Colorado.
Um or out of state, you know, that that that's different than. You know, someone has an ADU on their property or the house next door, they're renting out as a short term rental. That seems. Different and that, you know, yeah, somebody's not gonna have the party there when. The owner of the short term, you know, and the owners.
Yeah, but we have or ordinances for noise and stuff like that, so I mean.
And I know a lot of people that are snowbirds and so when they leave the S T R their homes. They're not going to long term rent them because they're gonna be back in four months. So. How do you?
Well, and I mean, if you wanna flip to the to the positive sides too, there's a lot of people that that live in this community that do short term rentals, whether they're an ADU on their property or the house next door or a couple. Houses in town and that's their livelihood or that's the way that they. You know, especially if it's their ADU or, you know, or they have the house next door. I mean, that's what's helping pay. Their mortgage and keep them in their home. So I mean, there is that too, and I think that you have to look at on to that side of it as well.
And I I look at it also as, you know, um. Our S T Rs. Affecting. Our lower income. Rental possibilities. I don't think so, because short term rentals are going for a whole lot more money than um. Than somebody, you know, but sixty percent of the A and I or whatever um.
Yeah, but it's easier to buy a a house that's not so great, that's small, flip it and turn it into a short term rental and that pulls it off the market as. A potential long term rental.
In a city of Livingston, it's as long as the city of Livingston, room for red is painted on signs. That you can see in historical photographs.
I think some of it too is like. Just sitting up here for this many years and seeing like so many fo- so many folks like down down the valley. Towards Gardner and seeing the most extreme example of what happens when a community is bought out. You know, that's like, that's very like a very extreme example and and Gardner has its own limitations, so does not live the different limitations in Livingston limitations, right? And also it's true that those are our community members, like these are our neighbors. Um some people have moved back to living move to Livingston from Gardner because there are real impacts to the Gardner community from. The community flipping to mostly short term rentals and so. You know. I think it's also important not to like negate that reality. Um that that fear is like real and that's not so far away from Livingston, even if that's not our current reality, so. I don't wanna make it like it's nothing when um there's plenty of places in Montana where there's like examples of it.
I really had to, you know, at least of the property managers that I know, they employ local house cleaners. That uh generally speaking, higher rate than the house cleaner at, you know, a hotel or other style.
All bad. I don't think short terminals are all bad. I mean, if the question was like, what are the concerns with it? I don't know like where that leads you, Commissioner Lyons, but.
I mean.
Like in terms of thinking about the table.
Yeah, so I, you know, I just put forward that. That scenario really empathetically. If it if it's about displacement, then we would look where we'd have the most impact on avoiding displacement. It kinda sounds to me like the sentiment at these tables is similar to what. Chair Schwartz was reporting from the land the land use board, which is like mixed. And we've we've kind of directed. Um Mister Gager. To to do some more research on the ag designation. Sounds like this one could use more research too. While while I have the poor, um I I think that I misunderstood. And underestimated the effort that went into including this in this regulation. And undersold kind of the significance of the first step and I I I misjudged it and and hearing from you, Mister Gager kind of. Explaining um what was what's functionally happening in here. I miss I misjudged it and it's it's much better than 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 how I estimated it in my initial remarks, so. Actually, this is a great first step. And I apologize for kind of putting it down. Um I, you know, I I was hopeful we were gonna like make a more. Definitive policy choice, but we're heading in that direction. And more than just like putting some uses in a table, there's there's more to it than than I than I understood and. And so I I I take back that comment from before. I actually think this is a great first step uh and I'm and I'm sorry for for denigrating that person.
I think it's good that we had the discussion though, because I think that there's. There's community members that wouldn't have realized that either, right? Like, what are we doing here? Like, why? What is this? What is this leading to? And I wonder too, I mean, I would. You know, whether we. Whether we do anything different within this code than what's here or not, if we decide not to, I would make. The recommendation that as we move forward, as the commission moves forward, that. Perhaps because folks are gonna have to register with the cities. To to register their their short term rentals. The beauty of that is then you're gonna get the data, right? You're gonna get the data like exactly how many of each you have. And it might be really great to get that data and analyze it. And then also maybe as the commission, look at it and say, you know, when we maybe we're gonna decide that. I'm making up numbers now, but just for example, there's two hundred and seventy five vacation rentals, you know, in in town and. Looking at this as a commission, we feel that. Four hun- I'm again making up numbers, four hundred is the most that this town needs. So people can have short term rentals until we hit that number and then when we hit that number. We're done, you know.
Like a liquor license.
You know, it's something like that, so if because if we have that data. And can, you know, look at the number that there is and the, you know, percentage of. Houses that that is.
Let's see if there is a problem.
And then there's gonna be a cost to people who don't register with the city. There's like some sort of like fine, right? Like, so if you don't. Yeah, like a punitive cost to not like. So like that's all I mean, right?
If you don't measure it, you can.
That's coming, right? Okay.
But that that could give, you know, a commission. That might be helpful to just then make that determination of like, you know. This number is the amount, the most that this town should have, because that's a certain percentage of them. Again, I don't think so.
Completely agree. Uh the on the um. On the like regulatory mechanism though. Mister Gager, would you remind us how that's gonna work? Cause I I I do remember seeing. Language in here about about registration, but like how do how does how's the city gonna know? Like, you know, that like a a few good actors are gonna come say, hey, I've cut, I've got an S T R and I'm gonna.
Like a business license.
How do you envision that?
Uh that's a fantastic question, Commissioner. There's several ways that I have um personally managed that process in other municipalities. There are services out there that the city could contract with that basically scrape short term rental sites and then provide. Report of all listings within the geographic area. Um those services cost money um to the extent that the city utilized one of those services, the fee schedules that incorporate. Um that cost of service and portioned over all of the permit holders. Um al- alternately, I you know, I I guess I'm. While I was only born in nineteen eighty one, I am old enough to remember a time before those services existed. And and quite honestly, I at that point had an employee who. Went and read the listings manually, whether they were in the newspaper, online, or, you know, on Craigslist or what have you. And just picked up the phone and and started bird dogging people the old fashioned way. We do have a uh a code enforcement team, I think, that could. Get involved in that as well. So there's there's a lot of ways to to manage that that issue.
Those details. Wouldn't normally reside in the zoning code.
No, no, that that would be more kind of an operational administrative and and quite honestly, it really comes down to just a cost benefit analysis. You know, there's the the monitoring services typically are, you know, in that twenty to thirty thousand dollar range per year. And so it'd just be kind of understanding what our lost revenue is just based on our practical experience, so. Oh, yeah, and actually, thank you, Director Seaverston. Because the city of Livingston does not currently manage S T Rs, uh she pointed out that we. Um Sanitarium actually has a list of uh short term rentals as well, because they are required to register with Sanitarium and so. Again, there's a little bit of a compliance issue there, but we do have a a data source that would be available.
And what I would say on that too, just quickly, is at one point the county did have that software to scrub that, but they don't have it anymore, so just to be. Clear, but it would probably be easier for the city to do it smaller geographic area for.
But yeah, the cost really need to make up in fees, yeah.
Well, and 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 please, you know, know that um we have looked, you know, back at the envelope. There there would be a significant cost, a real cost. To short term rentals. Um you know, I can I can back at the envelope, but in somewhere in the five hundred to a thousand dollar range pretty easily. Especially if we should be on these soft ones.
So are we at a place to keep going? Are we? We're good on, okay.
I think so.
So we're still doing uses right now. I'm gonna CBD, I'm gonna move that to your height conversation.
Had lot sizes?
Yeah, we we've pretty much covered that.
No, uses is a different category.
You know, I think that the lot size category folded into ag and.
Oh, we okay, we covered it.
I would say though, um I'm gonna put Commissioner Kail's riparian does not equal wildlife corridors under uses. Even though there's like that's not a clean category, but they're another category. So I would agree with Commissioner Kail that wildlife corridors do not equal riparian zones, that those like. They're two overlapping conversations. And so I think like. Scrubbing it clean of wildlife corridors also doesn't meet the intent of the growth policy, because I think that was the thing we've been talking about, knowing that bears were here, for example.
Bears and moose and yeah, all the things. So I yeah, I'm I was just. I feel like we're missing potentially an opportunity to just by removing. What was in the old policy about wildlife habitat migration corridors. In the sensitive and the environmental protection and sensitive areas and. I think it would be great to see that come back in. One thirty three, so that that's one thirty three is sort of the clean copy. I don't know, let me see if I can find the.
That's not.
I don't know if there's better update for that as well, that would be.
Right, or it's like related, but there aren't like P U V zone, right? P U V is like across.
Where the original wildlife corridors is?
Or just mention it, at least mention it.
I, yeah, I see it. It's under the original document. Yeah, there there's something on page two, I just did like a control F. But page two oh one has something.
I was gonna say, there's also, so I I will point out that the language that is being. That has been identified and there's also some on the top of page two, five, three in the packet that talks about. Um wildlife habitat or migration corridors and. So that language actually is not language that was ever part of the Livingston municipal code. That was language that at one time was. Um being contemplated as part of this process. Um however, uh you know, uh. In our discussions with Fish Wildlife and Parks, we've come to understand that many of the maps um and corridors, you know. Actually have not been identified within the city, so we would have to work with them to create some of these corridors. Um and and I guess, you know, if if it is the will and desire of the commission. Or staff to move down this path of reviewing um. Uh you know, wildlife corridors and just impacts of zoning on on wildlife. I think it would be helpful if the commission could actually articulate. Um what exactly we're talking about here when we do it, you know, and I just think about on subdivisions, right? Division regulation conversations, those really pertain to fence types and um and things like that. Yeah, and and so I I guess I'm at a little bit of a loss to understand, uh because I've not seen it before. How how um the city or the city commission is contemplating uh the regulation of of wildlife corridors. Um within zoning code, because you know, short of prohibiting fencing in certain areas. Um or or creating larger setbacks um in some areas or or just creating actual setbacks in some areas. Outside of those two, it's difficult, I think, for the the planning director and I to really contemplate concretely what the commission is looking for. Outside of those two, it's difficult, I think, for the the planning director and I to really contemplate concretely what the commission is looking for.
Sure, I can speak to that a little bit, I think.
Yeah, we talked about it a little bit at the um. The planning board. This came up, and I think we were talking, it was a bit about mapping, to be honest with you. It's like, where do we have high density or low density? In relation to where is the migration happening? So for example, there's a certain part of town.
Oh, I know, I understand that, but I I guess, how are those maps applied in a zoning context? And what what are these setbacks, or what are the other zoning regulations that would arise from that mapping exercise, I guess is the point. If we're to do research between now and the next meeting, I just, I I'm trying to. Given the late hour and that we've got things to do in closed session, like you, trying to advance the conversation.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was, I think it came down to like mapping and like where. Like, so some of it might come through naturally through the conversations with mapping. Waterways, but like, I think some of it had to do with like. Where we were indicating low density on the map in relation to like where we knew there was activity, like. The most, for example, and the R ones on the south part of town, like. It's like marshy by the river, um.
I, I.
So I'm not sure, like, for this, I think it might be more map land is where.
And what I think is, if we continue, if the conversation continues about. Riparian zones and we do more research and mapping out that, I think that if you, if we put things in place around the riparian zones. We are going to catch a lot of that in that part, you know, so I think that the idea that we continue the conversation about riparian zones and look at that mapping. You'll catch that as well.
Also, to be quite frank, um, back in the day, before you all were here, um. When we had concerns about wildlife and developments, um, we weren't always getting the information that we needed on the planning board or wanted on the planning board interpretation in. Relation to um. Wildlife moving through. I think that is one thing that's changed, is we've gotten more of that information and we've opened the door on those conversations in a way that it was very closed before with fencing or um. Containing garbage or like even acknowledging like that bears were in Livingston, like that was a thing that. We were told it doesn't happen, that there's no bears here, and so. I think at that point, we were trying to like, find a way to keep it on the table. With all the tools we have, but perhaps it's if it's coming through in other areas now.
Yeah, I think that if we just move forward with that conversation around the riparian zones, you're gonna.
Okay.
Check some of those clauses.
Do you wanna keep the conversation moving then?
Yep.
Um, the last thing I have for uses, I guess specifically, is something I forgot to bring up, and it was that we didn't talk about fireworks stands. That's a change on this use table. I don't think we allowed fireworks stands at all in the city of Livingston before, because we don't allow fireworks in the city of Livingston. Um, but this new use table has it as a conditional use in the C B D and the G C and an allowed use in light industrial and industrial. So my preference would be to make it not an allowed use anywhere in town. I think the only place it's allowed now is because it was grandfathered in on an annexation. Um, so I don't know why we'd open it up when we don't even allow it in town. Personally, that's my.
Isn't the only fireworks stand in town, the one that was grandfathered on?
Yes, and it was grandfathered, like it was tied.
Anexed, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know, like, why, I guess, like, we would add it when we don't even allow it in town. Fireworks.
Right.
Do we need to have it so that we're saying that you can't, and then just change it to no all the way across, so as to say like fireworks stands aren't allowed?
I mean, I don't, I guess if there's a reason. That I don't know about from staff, why we're allowing fireworks to be sold when we don't allow fireworks to be. Lit.
Yeah. Yeah, and so, um, thank you. So, um, you may recall, there was an annexation that took place prior to my time here. That brought um a firework stand, an operating fireworks stand into city limits. And so the um, I think the. The desire here was to recognize that we do have that use in city limits. And um. From there, so, um, but if it's the will of the commission to uh not have that and to have it be a um. Preexisting nonconforming, certainly we're happy to move forward in that direction.
I'm just one commissioner, what do you guys think?
I agree.
Yeah.
Uh, it it makes no sense to have that as an allowable use in a. Community where it's an illegal practice.
It's illegal to use them anyway.
And honestly. That only stands to help the existing business if it is not a, an allowable use. And, uh. You know, we, like, if we're, if we're supporting the commerce of. Of fireworks, but not allowing the use of fireworks. What we're doing is we're selling fireworks and then telling folks to take it to the county.
Right.
I don't think that's really our intention either, so.
Pretty mu- pretty easy.
And I don't, I was on the commission when that annexation happened, and I don't think, I don't think it was the. Will of the commission to have more fireworks stands in town. I think it was just like recognizing the current.
Current owner of that, but once it's sold, it.
It's no longer.
It's no longer available.
Yeah. Okay, are we, are we at a place with that one that we keep moving? Okay, next, um, we have heights.
Uh, I've got a use.
Oh, you do?
Or actually, Commissioner Kail had it, but um, mobile.
Oh, the mobile homes.
Yeah, and I, I just, we've, we've discussed this, I believe, in the past, um, but uh that is something that's probably handled through building.
Bye, okay, so we don't need to worry about that one? Or we talk about it when we talk about buildings?
Commissioner Kail was talking about um foundations.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, and you said.
It has to be, because they have to tie it down.
Okay, so that doesn't have anything to do with zoning?
Yeah.
We removed it from the zoning code.
Okay.
Because it is looked at as part of the building permit performance.
Okay, so if we wanna do something about that, that'd be another conversation for another time.
Yeah, and and I think just to add some clarity to Director Seabirdson's comments, the um zoning code did not. Previously discuss pads relative to mobile homes. It did have mobile home zoning and that, and so that was what was removed from the zoning code.
It actually wasn't there.
It was.
It talks about anchoring and, yeah, it 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 went through the whole thing, and so we, yeah.
So that just came out, and then that's discussed, that that didn't belong here in the first place. No, that's helpful, that's helpful.
There's a lot, yeah.
Okay, moving on.
The eighties were fun times.
So we're done with that one then?
I would think so, yeah, if that, that doesn't sound like it's not germane to the code.
Is there anything else with uses?
All right.
So heights. This isn't heights, but I'm gonna throw it in. Page eighty-five, little to no traffic impacts.
Uh, you know, if I could have a moment to just kind of expand upon that one, um. You know, I I guess I probably would offer to the commission that's um. Section thirty point fifty-four deals with the home occupations and some of the S T Rs actually does provide some clarity on on what we were thinking, so. I I guess I probably offered that the commission should have been thirty fifty-four.
He gives a page. And heading, I'll get there. Thirty fifty-four, oh, I'm coming up on it. One twenty-five.
Emergency situation, restricted traffic.
So, uh, you know, there were comments about um. Trip generation, and I think there's a number of of points here in in the criteria B, which actually do directly target him with a trip generation. But certainly, staff looks forward to the direction from the commission.
Just to keep us moving, can you point to exactly the number that you're thinking of? So we can understand and implication, yeah, thank you.
Absolutely, I would say that B three, the total floor area devoted to the occupation shall not exceed fifteen percent of the total floor area. That certainly would go to. Uh, limit traffic just insofar as it limits the ability to hold inventory. I would say number five, direct sales and products off display shelves or backs is not allowed, but a person may pick up an order which is placed early by telephone or at a sales party. I think that's going to limit traffic because frankly, there's no browsing in that situation. Um, there shall be now signs erected other than those allowed. That certainly limits the visibility and therefore the walk in nature, as does, you know, the lack of shelves there. Eight, there should be no display or evidence apparent from the exterior of the lot that the premises are being used for any purpose other than that of a dwelling, except for the permitted sign, again, goes to reduce foot traffic, so. Again, staff is is happy to uh incorporate any points that the commission would like, but I did before this. Conversation commenced, did just wanna point out that section.
No, that's great.
Great, yeah, cause, I mean, we can. Detail this thing to death, too, I mean.
Just watch us. Okay. Are you good with that?
I. It, you know, if the um. Trying to find the page that that was on.
It's on page one twenty-five.
No, the page that the, uh, oh, yeah.
Page eighty-five, yeah.
Like if this, if that language persists into the code. Just describing. Medium density residential, saying that. They're permitted, provided they have little, there's no impact on traffic. I guess, I I guess I'm going to. Uh, primary criteria for subdivisions. Um, but if someone were developed to develop. One of these uses by right, it's not gonna come to the commission, right? It's gonna come to staff. So that that decision would would never come before the commission. Is that right, Mister Gager?
Um, nah, I don't necessarily know that that is correct, because when I look at. Commercial uses, there aren't quite a number in that R two that have a C, which is a conditional use, and I would actually point the commission, so.
But a, but a neighborhood serving retail. Would be a a by right. Use, right? Because it's.
Still conditional, isn't it?
Oh, okay, I get what you're saying. Some of, some of those neighborhood serving.
Yeah.
Uh, retails are conditional. I just think that this sets up a framework of discussion of traffic impacts when that comes before the commission. Um, and and I think that if you. If you were to look at it, look at the traffic impacts critically. It could be ea- pretty easy to make the argument that there's more than little to no impact. Um, and so I honestly, I, it's not, it's, it's basically, I think that having that sentence. Creates like potential conflict around some of these intended conditional uses. And so, just striking that sentence. Just cleans that up.
Right, and we'll also know, just getting rid of that.
Yeah.
So you're good with the criteria, you just don't like this definition?
Yeah, exactly, because, you know, if somebody in the future picks up on that and says, well. You know, I called up Headwaters Engineering and they told me that there's gonna be this many trips generated by. By that use. Then it, then it, then you can argue that there's more than little or no impact on traffic. It al- it also creates a framework for like potential organized opposition against one of those uses. I I just don't, I don't really see. A strong helpful function of of that clause in the sentence. That's all.
So just strike, provide they have little to no impact on traffic or the surrounding neighborhood.
Yeah, cause it's, it's subjective and and it's, I think it's really easy to argue that, then, um.
Okay.
That there's gonna be an impact. It's, I'm I'm not arguing against the the zone.
Yeah.
Cause I really like the, I like the spirit of that zone. I just don't wanna like create an avenue for. Um, for opposition.
Okay.
Are we good with this?
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I even strike just the whole sentence.
Well, they can edit it and bring it back to us. They get the intent, right? You get the intent?
Sure do.
Should we keep going? Okay. Okay, the next on the list is the central business district. So it sounds like, um. The conversation is really around, like, do we wanna shrink this central business district, and also folks seem to like the. This sort of inter- intermediate zone with the L M U. One thing that hasn't been brought up is what if we keep the central dis- business district and then we put the L M U around it anyway? Because that always R three on the future land use map anyway, so. I mean, like, is there like a consensus or a middle ground that we can find around the central business district?
Right, so I think that we're not talking about the extent of the central business district today, because we're. We're talking about the code and not the map.
Oh, yeah.
Um, we're gonna have a discussion about the map.
Okay, so we'd put a pin in this one and bring it back later?
Yeah, well, the, well, the, the part that remains to be discussed is height. With the central business, business district. Right now, there's no height restriction in the central business district in the existing code. And we're talking about.
Sixty.
We're talking about capping it at sixty feet, so. I think it's reasonable for the commission to discuss is sixty feet. The right height cap for the central business district.
And what's the height of the tallest? But like, what's the height of the Murray and that um furniture building? The furniture building's the tallest, right? Not counting the Sherwood.
Um, yeah, it's our understanding that the Wilmot building that houses Livingston Home Outfitters is approximately seventy-two feet tall.
And how tall is the um? The building that I said that I just forgot the name.
Sherwood, the Sherwood?
No, not the Sherwood.
Murray, oh, the Murray.
Yeah, thank you.
It's fairly significantly shorter than that.
Yeah, it's only three floors.
Full story.
It's seventy-two foot, is that also with the penthouse up on top, the HVAC?
Yeah, um, I spoke to the owner when they were doing some HVAC replacement up there, and that was. The crane operator, I think,'s best guess of how high up they were was about seventy-two feet up there.
Good guess, yeah.
I think, yeah, he's the guy to know.
Yeah.
Mister, you know, let me ask you this quickly in this discussion, because I think it's important. How high does our fire truck reach?
Um, well. Yeah, I, you know, we um, we do have a hundred foot ladder, but I would point out that. The city of New York has buildings that are significantly taller than their highest ladder truck. Modern firefighting typically is actually done from inside the structure more than outside the structure, especially in a building of that size that requires sprinkling. Um, and so.
I heard you say.
Yeah.
I, I, it's, that's not one that I necessarily focus a ton on.
You're not concerned about our ability to fight a fire in a taller building or have the equipment to be able to do that?
No, we, we, we were able to fight the Wilmot building before we had a uh a ladder truck here.
Okay.
Seventy-two feet.
And sixty feet is what the cap, what the city said, or the state says, sixty feet is the shortest you can go.
Yeah, and so I, you know, commissioners, if I may, just, and I, I will be very, very succinct and brief in my comments, but. Um, you may recall from some prior conversations that we had related to heights. And um, and actually, we touched upon them a little bit earlier today, but maybe not as well as we could have with the the story heights. And, or excuse me, the 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 story um. Maps, and so, uh, you know, there, there was kind of the the discussion of of the heights on on Park Street leading up to, because. You know, currently, the highway commercial zone has a significantly taller uh sixty foot height limit and. Um, and certainly I do acknowledge that there is a tie um between height restrictions and density and sprawl. Um, but there is also a connection between height restrictions and community character. And one thing that we heard very prominently through the growth policy was its goal for community character. That was echoed in our. Uh, our surveys was in our open houses and and a number of other venues, and so I would encourage the commission not to lose sight. Um, of of that goal, um, to maintain community character when we went through the downtown master plan process. Uh, the recommendation from the community was on the, and this is the worst possible way to say it, on the northern part of South Main Street. Folks would prefer a two to three story.
Folks would prefer a two to three-story um, height limit, but on the southern part of South Main Street, uh, the community was more comfortable with a four or five-story height limit. Um, for better or worse, the uh, state of Montana and the state legislature and their infinite wisdom took away our ability to achieve any of those community goals. And so uh, the planning director, staff and others, including myself, have sought alternate means to achieve that community goal of maintaining community character while also limiting the height in the commercial core. And so um, the the adjustment of the boundaries of the CBD and also the implementation of the LMU. Um, which is a bit of a commercially focused district around certain parts of the CBD, especially those parts of the CBD that today exist largely as as um, medium density or low density residential. It was it was really to kind of respect the integrity of some of those. I would also point out that um, we do have other issues related to unfettered density in certain areas of the CBD. And um, we all uh, enjoyed a great construction experience downtown. And if I just may uh, humor the commission and the community for just, or you would humor me for just a quick second. Um, this is the utility map of our downtown. You'll see B Street here, you'll see Third Street here. Between that is what most of us think of as the CBD. However, you will note, these nineteen twenty-twos, those are actually the year of construction for those water and sewer lines. And so while we do have some nineteen ninety-nines and soon to be some twenty twenty-fives in the central business district. Down in those areas of the central business districts that are recommended to no longer be zoned CBD, we actually have nineteen twenty-two pipes. And those nineteen twenty-two pipes generally range in size from four to six inches. And so uh, to the extent that um, that density is allowed to continue in certain areas of what is currently the CBD. Uh, the city is quite possibly um, faced with upgrading the pipes in some pretty significant areas of the downtown. And so um, zoning certainly is a statement of where we would like uh, the the community to grow and how we would like the community to grow. But I think growth also needs to be constrained by infrastructure realities and those costs and lifestyle tasks associated with that. So I didn't mean to to jump in and insert myself in the conversation, but I think community character and uh, utility capacity were two elements that were not being discussed.
Yeah, well, and nothing's permanent. And that's can always be amended down the road, so.
In forty years, just kidding.
Yeah.
I um, didn't get a chance to speak to height, actually.
Good.
Um, I think it's helpful, first of all, to know like why, because that's information that I don't think that was included. That Matthew just shared with the age of the pipes. So that's really helpful to know like why you all came to that decision.
Yeah.
Um, but I was gonna say regarding heights, I think. You know, I don't, this isn't like my personal opinion on heights in downtown Livingston. But what I remember from those meetings was that folks kept referencing the Murray. As like the sort of. The tall building downtown, which we know is like not the tallest building downtown, but that's like the building a lot of people were referencing. And I think that's below sixty feet, I think, but I don't know that for sure. So I think it's just like about finding the consensus, cuz most things are still not that tall downtown. So. Any, like, there's just, like, there's not that many tall buildings downtown, like, a bunch of them are staggered and much shorter, actually. So I think. It's like about increment, incremental policy changes to some extent, like. The vision of density versus like the reality of getting there. Um, I think that's why policy of- often happens like in increments is because. It, you know, the way change happens is a little bit slower sometimes and keeping up with infrastructure. And so you don't have like these like weird leapfrog height developments, but things sort of move at a slower pace. I don't know, that's kind of what I'm thinking about with. With the height, like, I'm comfortable with the sixty. I also hear what Commissioner Alliance is saying about density, and I agree that that also is true. And I think a big thing about community character downtown was um, just like the historic nature, which we haven't talked about cuz that gets covered in other places or of the code um. And. Building height just came up a lot. Like brick buildings and buildings of a certain height. And then the view shed is like the next thing that gets wrapped in. Um, that's what I remember. I'm comfortable with sixty.
I am too.
Um, I'm also comfortable with like having conversations about like what it what it was pushing the edge of density look like in downtown to reach those bigger goals. I don't know, do we need to keep talking about? The height for the CBD? And we'll talk about maps when we get to the map. Agenda item at a future meeting, but do we need to keep talking about heights?
Considering that almost nothing downtown at sixty feet. I mean, that can easily walk back from seventy-two cuz the the, I can never remember the name of that building, the.
The furniture store.
Yeah, the furniture store.
Wilmot.
The Wilmot, right. The facades are what people are thinking about when they're thinking of downtown and Main Street.
Yeah.
And so. Those are well under sixty feet. It's just the miniature of it. I think you'd have a hard time. I mean, i- if you built everything downtown to sixty feet with a facade so it looked old, whatever. That's, what is that, five stories? Each one of those buildings is about five stories when you add them up? That's quite a bit of what we don't have now. Looks everything down there is three stories, four stories, so. I'm good with that.
I am.
Yeah, and then seeing the age of the infrastructure, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
I forgot all about that.
Yeah, that, quite frankly. Totally neglected to think about the height diameters and capacities. It's good call.
Commissioner Alliance, what were you thinking about heights on some of the other? Designations as well?
Yes, um, although I I actually think the, the kind of the ra- like, if you look at the heights in terms of like ratios, how they relate to each other. Um, they kind of make sense. Um, so I honestly, like, I I don't particularly have a dog in the fight of of height. I don't have a dog in fight of any of this, but um. I I don't, I didn't come here with like a, with an idea of what the ideal height is. And I actually think where we get into um, the impacts on density is when we're gonna be talking about the map.
Okay.
Um, because uh, there is a big difference between sixty feet and thirty-six feet. Um, in terms of, in terms of what that density, what that potential density looks like. Um, and and then my, kind of the the thing that that's strongest to me on on not being worried about height in the CBD. Is that the market hasn't tried to build over sixty feet. Um, the modern market hasn't in the CBD. Um, and uh, so we're not, in in the current market, we're not like inhibiting uh, density there. You know, when I, when I think about planning, I'm 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 trying to not really think about like the contemporary. Market, and I'm thinking about future markets, so it has the potential to limit future markets and to, and I, you know, I think that the the. The infrastructure discussion is valid and challenging and nuanced. Um, and I'm I'm not, I don't think it's. I don't have anything constructive to add to that at the moment, but um, the, I I'm kind of thinking more about the ratios of the heights. Um, and they they make sense to me. And um, if the commission feels strongly or happy about sixty feet, I'm not gonna um, provide any pushback on that. And I, and I think that the density discussion comes in when we look at the map.
So should we keep moving and we're good with sixty? Are you good with that?
Hmm.
Anything left? Uh, I think R three LMU, keep CBD, that's done.
Yep.
Um, no, the other question that you had, this is miscellaneous I'm throwing in, was about unfinished projects downtown.
Oh, is that, Mr. Gager, without being?
Oh, no.
And I just wanna make sure she gets her question, right? Okay, yeah, moving on.
Okay, I think that's it, all that I had, guys. So what we settled on was a conversation about this open pastoral ag zone. Um, coming back to us, no fireworks allowed. And R two, fix the definition, remove the provided clause. And then um, we didn't touch on removing the line from. Director Seaberson's suggestion to remove the line supportive transitional housing. I'll just start by saying I'm fine with removing that. I mean.
Yeah.
All right, that's fine.
That's in the use table under residential uses.
Commissioner Alliance, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay.
Okay, do you want a motion?
Chief, that would be.
All right, give me just a second, I gotta scroll up to some page. There, okay. All right, I'm gonna move to approve the First reading of ordinance three zero six four for a text amendment to the City of Livingston zoning ordinance by repealing and replacing the entirety of the text of chapter thirty with the proposed text revisions, including removing the supportive transitional housing line of the residential uses in the list of uses table thirty point forty. And also removing or changing firework stands to not allowed uses for all zones. Uh.
By Shenius.
Yeah.
Were we gonna just put it as not allowed or just take it out of the table?
I would recommend keeping it in the table, having it not allowed.
Yeah, just because you have one already.
Um, and also. Amending the definition of R two on page eighty-five to remove the clause started with the word provided. And also have staff bring back uh, a proposal around a zone addressing ag slash open pastoral lands and authorize the chair to sign ordinance three zero six four.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Nudes, second by Kale, roll call please.
Chair Schwartz.
Four.
Nice chair, Nudes.
Four.
Commissioner Kale.
Four.
Commissioner Alliance.
Or Commissioner Willage.
Four. Motion carries.
My gosh.
That um, concludes the. Open portion of our meeting. This evening, we're going into closed session. Um, closed session to discuss legal strategy pursuant to MCA two dash three, that's two oh three. Section four and B. And also, closed session to discuss matters of personal privacy pursuant to MCA two dash three, that's two oh three, section three.
All make a motion to go into closed session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Lock it up and we'll we'll come out of closed session, we'll. Open it back up. Good to go. All right, this meeting of the Livingston City Commission. Is called back to order. Um, the last order of business this evening, um, city manager comments.
Uh, given late hour, I will keep my comments brief and just thank the community for their support.
Thank you, Mr. Gager, Commissioner Willage.
Well, uh, again, given with the long evening, thank you very much for a uh, very productive night.
Yield, thank you, Commissioner.
I just wanna thank Mr. Gager and his staff for um, the incredibly heavy lift that went into um, this new. Uh, this new zoning code and and I just hope that it's known that any critiques that that I've provided of them is uh. One time, an advisor told me that as we were working on a paper that um, needed a little bit more work, that it was gilding a lily. It's what we were doing, and that's, that's what I see what's happening here tonight. Um, and that kind of attention and kind of enthusiasm that I'm bringing to it is a reflection of the work that I've put in since twenty twenty-one on the growth policy and wanting to see it come to fruition in in good, in good policy and good implementation. And I think we're, we're really close and I really appreciate the thousands of hours that have have um, brought us to something that our entire community can be proud of. Um, and that's, that's the threat, that's the threshold that we're looking for, something that that we can be proud of. And and we're, we're so close and I really appreciate all the efforts that that have gone to to getting it there. And um, if if it weren't close to being something that we could be proud of, it wouldn't be worth the the time and attention that we're putting into it. And so um, we're, it means a lot to us and um, and I, yeah, just really thankful for the efforts to to get us to this point. I yield.
Commissioner, go.
Uh. I enjoyed our conversation tonight around the zoning code. Um, I think uh, there's a few of us on this commission that really geek out on this stuff. And so I know our conversations go on for a little while, but I think that um, for us, it's, it's really important and really exciting to have those conversations. Um, I applaud the city manager and the staff for the document that they gave us tonight. And looking back on other documents that we've gotten in the past, particularly a growth policy that had to go back to a planning board and was worked on for months. Um, with meetings that went for hours and hours at a time that we got through this this evening. As honestly, as quickly as we did and came to the conclusion that we did. And, you know, we're moving on to the next meeting. Um, I'm really excited and really proud of the staff for what they've accomplished and brought to us tonight. Um, and I really enjoyed our conversation around it this evening, so thank you, and I yield.
Yeah, I would echo the comments, you didn't call on me, but I'm.
Sorry, you spoke.
I would just echo the comments of Commissioner Lyons and Commissioner Kale. Um, it's hard to put into words how I feel about the zoning code update and all of the um, updates pertaining to the growth policy. And to see the difference in process um, over time. It's. You know, and and folks can say that we like spin out over the details, but that's literally our role is to pay attention to the details because the details matter for this. Um, it matters to the future of Livingston, especially knowing that it's decades before significant changes to these documents that guide everything. Um, huge thanks to staff for doing the lift. Um, so much that was on us last time and it was not ideal. So I'm just so grateful that we got such high quality documents and really just elegant thoughtful policy that's just. It, you know, it starts to get a little bit into the art of local government. Um, and it's lovely to see it playing out in Livingston and to have documents that are worthy of the community that we serve. Um, so thank you for that. I'm gonna shift gears now and say that um, a lengthy letter was submitted to the commission recently. Um, and the city manager and all staff were addressed in it. Even though it wasn't sent to all staff, um, because it's, I'll just hold it up. Right here, it's a thirty-two page letter-ish. And because it referenced policy and has influenced recent public safety decisions, I wanna submit this letter for the record. Um, to preserve it for transparency. I won't be reading this out loud into the record tonight, um, because I don't wanna add further stress to everybody that's been impacted by recent events. Um, I am gonna ask that when it's submitted. Um, individuals' addresses are removed and there's a health document in here, and I don't wanna violate anything related to HIPAA. So I wanna make sure that those things are not included in the record as well. Um. I also wanna say that the situations that have happened remind us how serious threats against public officials can be and how essential clear communication and mutual care are um, in times of crisis. You know, I wish I could say this was Livingston's first crisis, but it's not. But it's certainly as serious or more serious than anything else we faced. I wanna thank the Livingston Police Department for its coordination with the city commission to ensure the continued safety of our city manager and his family. And I also wanna thank staff, um, city staff who recently joined uh, Chair Schwartz and myself in the most recent sentencing in the city court. I think that your support of our community, of our whole organization demonstrates the strength of the City of Livingston government. I think that your support of our community, of our whole organization demonstrates the strength of the city of Livingston government. And to the community members that have come forward, I wanna thank you all for. Um, those of you that have reached out to us, individual commissioners and staff members in support of what's happening. Um, we welcome your kindness and your encouragement, and I wanna invite you to keep reaching out to staff. Um, and commissioners when you see us around town and offering words of support, cause it is tough times. Um, finally, this event has brought to my attention that there's currently no threat response policy. For when there are threats of death or violence against the city manager or city commissioners. Um, I'm certain that there's probably some like internal staff, like when staff are threatened, there's probably executive branch policies, but we don't have anything for us and our staff person. So I'd like to make a motion tonight to formalize a threat response policy that can be used in the future if this occurs again.
So did that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for your second. Um, I don't really wanna get into that policy tonight, I trust that we can have those conversations at a future meeting, but I would say that I. Given the um intensity and the redundancy and repetitiveness of. Recent events, it would be nice if that policy could come sooner rather than later, knowing that these are really piling on this year, um. I know we have a lot to do in upcoming meetings, but I'm hoping we can also make a little bit of space for this too, um. I think that's all I have, I I real heartfelt thanks to staff for um working with the commission. Um. I'm really proud of the city of Livingston organization and to see like how far we've come in times of crisis and just. Become more organized and taking care of each other, and I'm also. Like impressed that at the same time that we're dealing with like real crises this year. Um, we have this massive zoning code update in front of us, so the work continues and it's still coming before us. In a really significant and meaningful way, even though it's a really difficult time to be a public servant. I yield.
Thank you, Vice Chair News. Um, I'll echo what everybody said about. The um zoning code update process and a shout out to the. Land use board for all the work they they did on the workshops and stuff like that and uh. Um. I also want to congratulate Jessica Wilcox, Cindy Daniels and Kemp O'Neill, who were just uh. Elected to the city commission, and they will take up residence, be at the first meeting in January. And at this late hour, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Meeting of Livingston City Commission is adjourned at eleven twenty. PM.